Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the first Oklahoma City Planning Commission meeting of the year 2014. If you have pagers or cell phones or similar devices with you, would you please either turn those off or silence them now? We would appreciate that. Many of you have already discovered, but if you are here to talk to us about a case today and you are not the applicant, sheets like this are on the table outside the chambers, and if you would complete it with respect to the case you'd like to address us on and share it with our staff, we'd be happy to hear you when we hear the case. First order of business is minutes of our December meeting. Move approval, second. We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes. Cast your votes, and the minutes are approved. On continuance requests today, we have four uncontested requests for continuance. These are item 11, SP 465, continue until January the 23rd. Item 35, PC 10358, until January the 23rd. Item 36, C 6549, until January the 23rd. And item 37, PUD 1523, until February the 13th. Is anyone here today who came to talk to us about any of the items just read 11, 35, 36, or 37 on our agenda?
Move the uncontested continuance.
Gave you a motion and a second to approve the continuances. Cast your votes, and those are approved. We have a long list of additional continuance requests today, so if you would follow closely with us, we would appreciate it. First of these is item 1, C 6564, continue until March the 27th. Item 6, PC 10361, until February the 13th. Item 7, C 6558, until February the 13th. Item 14, C 6566, until February the 13th. Item 15, PUD 1521, until February the 13th. Item 16, C 6557, February the 13th. Item 17, PC 10363, February the 13th. Item 24, S P U D 746, January the 23rd. Item 26, S P U D 734, January the 23rd. Item 31, C 6565, February the 27th. Item 32, C 6548, January the 23rd. Item 33, C 6540, February the 13th. Item 34, C 6493, February the 13th. Anyone here today to address us on any of the items that Russell just read? Particularly, I was interested in a music venue on 23rd Street that's continued for two weeks. Anyone here on that one today? Okay. Move any requests?
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve the additional continuance requests as read. Cast your votes, and those are approved. Are there any continuance requests from the public today? Hearing none, we'll go to the consent docket. There are five items on the consent docket. The first one of those has been continued. Item 2 is C 6492. Item 3, C 6552. Item 4, CE 872. And item 5, PUD SP 1472. Anyone here to talk to us today about any of the continuance items 2 through 5? Move approval, second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the continuance, excuse me, the consent items. Cast your votes, and that's approved. Following items requiring a separate vote, item 6 and 7 have been continued. Item 8 is PUD 1522, application by Al Generations LLC to rezone 9435 Northwest 122nd Street from AA Agricultural to PUD 1522 in Ward 8. Is the applicant present? James. Put in the trash can. Thank you. Give us your name and address for the record, please.
Yeah, Ron Walters, 8501 South Walker, Oklahoma City.
And you're...
I'm sorry, I'm representing the owners.
And your proposal today is to...
Based on our proposal, it's this item and the one on the next side of it. My owners have seven acres there they bought. We're proposing to convert it into 10 light industrial lots. It's under a limited pud. Basically, it's going to be office warehouse type of project. We're going to put a street all the way down what would be the right side of y'all's map there. We're bringing water lines and all services into it. Sewer line is not available for the project. We'll be running off of septic systems for the area under, you know, standard DEQ guidelines. We're following the, I'm not sure, the, we want the buildings down our highway pretty guidelines, excuse me, the corridor guidelines, excuse, there you go, thank you. The buildings, we originally planned to start with two 7,000 square foot buildings up on the first couple of lots, and then we'll move back in phases and sections as we go through the development.
Okay, and you're okay with the technical evaluations and the staff report?
Yes, sir.
Okay, no one has signed up, commissioners?
I have one question. This is an I-1 PUD, and I understand deed and are asking for some I-1 uses, but most of these uses in here are not necessarily I-1 uses. The one thing that troubles me a little bit, being an I-1 PUD, when we talk about signage, we talk about signage will be consistent with the underlying zoning district, which is I-1. I'm a little concerned about what your signage might look like in this appearance corridor. I don't have a problem with the concept or the uses. I think you've done a very good job there, but can you address what the signage will be or won't be?
You know, obviously, we're going to follow whatever signage code, you know, allows for the person...
And that's my problem. The I-1 signage code allows for some pretty intense sign.
The PUD limits the signs to one for the identification of the development, six foot tall, and then it incorporates the, has to match the appearance of the building.
I read that, but it also says that it goes with the underlying zoning, and that concerned me.
Now, this would override that.
Okay, then I have no concern.
No one signed up?
I move approval, second.
Gave you a motion and a second to approve item 8. Cast your votes, and that's approved. Item 9 is C 6559, preliminary plat of Merritt Industrial Park, same property in Ward 8.
Same, ditto, sorry.
There are five technical evaluations. Staff has suggested, are you in agreement with all those?
Yes, sir.
Move approval.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve item 9. Cast your votes, and that's approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 10 is PC 10362, an application by Naefco Realty Company to rezone 809 North Tulsa from I-1 single family, mobile home park, I-1 light industrial, II-2 moderate industrial in Ward 3.
How are you doing today? Blair Naefy, 605 North Tulsa Avenue, representing the owners.
And you're requesting to rezone, to allow...
Currently, what exists is an I-1 with some, an R-1 and an RMH-2. One of the trailer parks was already emptied last year. We're in the process of moving those people who are still there in the park across the street to the other park on the other side of Tulsa. And what we're proposing to do is, what we're going to build is a, we don't know the square footage yet, what will be allowed mostly by dollar figure, but, and also zoning, but we plan to build another warehouse there to contain more for the industries there in that area.
Okay. We do have two people signed up, commissioners. We'll hear from them, Mr. Naefy, and then have you, give you a chance to respond. If you would give us your name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon. Elaine Woolsey, 4047 and 4049 Northwest 8th. It's a duplex. That's why we have two. I live on the corner of 8th and Tulsa. The trailer park across the street has been emptied for a year, as he said. It's caused a lot of dust problems, mice problems, possum problems, in addition to the truckers coming from the distribution center. We'll pull in there and park at night, and there's all kinds of activities going on there. The trailer park to the south, as he said, they are empty, and there's lots of litter and, you know, leftover refuse buildings and such. What's not on the map here is the trailer park that they're moving the other trailer parks to, and reports from those residents say that they are instructed that they will have to move out by 2015, 2016 because there will be more construction. The problem that we have is, we've lived there 49 years. It was a great place to grow up, but now it is so noisy with the trucks. You cannot sleep on that side of the house. The bedrooms can't be used. You cannot watch television in the living room. You cannot use the phone on that side of the house. We have to go to the laundry room or another bedroom on the other side of the house to use the phone. You cannot sit outside because you can't have a conversation, you can't hear. The dust is so invasive that it just literally tears the paint off the house. We've just spent the summer priming it. We didn't, weren't able to paint it because of the weather and wanting to paint it in the spring. And we've just put in two new HVAC units, and the construction that they're proposing is going to destroy those units, as they have the units in the past whenever something new is built. It's unbearable now to live there. I have no other option. And I hope that you'd consider that, that when the trucks drive by, it is so, the vibration is so much that our house shakes, the windows rattle. There are 28 windows in this home. Luckily, we inherited some money, and we changed those windows at a cost of $14,000. It has reduced the noise somewhat, but it's still, we still have the same problems with hearing in the house. I thank you for your time.
Thank you for coming down. Give us your name and address, please, for the record.
Don Murray, 4039 Northwest 8th Street.
Thank you.
I'd like to address the issue with traffic and nonconformity to the signs, speed limits in the area. The trucks, 18-wheelers, go up and down 8th Street. Connolly Construction and their equipment, all hours of the day. I fought a few years back to get stop signs put in in 8th and Farah to try to slow the traffic going from Tulsa straight through to Portland, which I got the stop signs put in. But they say one out of four people are uninsured in this state. Well, the people that stop at the stop signs or do California stops, they, 25 miles an hour in my neighborhood is, they might as well take the stop signs down.
Can you, sir, can you relate this to the zoning application we're talking about?
Right. Well, when they build another warehouse there, okay, it's going to create more traffic down through the neighborhood, more noise. If I try to sell my house and somebody's got an industrial park across the street from them, are they going to want to raise a family and their children worrying about truck traffic going up and down the road all day long, worrying about their child rolling a ball out in the street or whatever and getting run over by an 18-wheeler, which their signs posted saying, "No vehicles in excess of two axles on our road," yet they do it as if they're above the law. And I just don't, I don't think, I don't see it as a positive for where I live in my area.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Naefy?
I agree with him as far as the traffic on 8th Street. In fact, I've invited Oklahoma City Police Department many a times to park there and ticket anybody and everybody, especially my employees. I'd like to address those pictures that he, that were taken. If you actually look at every single one of them, none of them are my employees, and some of them were not actually coming to our warehouse. The first one, I can't tell you what that one is, I'll be honest. It's a blue streak that, on the side of a truck. It's not one of mine. The next one, Bar Sol, I looked them up online. They sell solvents. Down the street on 8th Street is Bentley Flooring, and I know they get semis in there, there to the east, and on the south on 8th Street. They weren't coming to my warehouse. The next truck, I don't know, that's just a common carrier. He could have been going anywhere. He could have been coming to my warehouse. And then the next one, yes, he was at my warehouse, but that's not one of our trucks. Our trucks take Tulsa because it's a stoplight at the end. It's an easier turn. Do we have trucks that use 8th Street? That's a flooring company, so that would probably be at Bentley's. I've always, anytime people have called to complain about a truck driver driving, we always ask the same two questions, what day, what truck number? Because we can't do anything unless we know.
Right.
If you look at an overall view of this map in this area, to the west is Connolly, so that explains a lot of the dust. It is a concrete manufacturing right there to the west. And what you don't see also to the south and to the east, to the east of that trailer park, is Atlas Paving Company, which is just an open, what we're proposing, we'll actually use up that land and hopefully prevent the people that have been parking and the problems that have been created by vacant land.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners? What other way is there to this area other than Northwest 8th?
Unfortunately, we, what is not on this, what you can't see is we're locked to the south by the railroad tracks. Though we own the land to the south, I have inquired lawyers, corporation commissioners, everybody, and the ability to try to get a crossing is, there's not enough money and not enough lawyer power to make the railroad give me a crossing to get the traffic out to the south. And to the west is a drainage ditch and private land, so I can't go to the west.
What about 10th Street?
You go north on Tulsa, and you can hang a left or right on Tulsa. 10th and Tulsa is a stoplight.
Is what?
Is a stoplight. So it's a much better intersection to go to anyway than 8th and Tulsa, or 8th and Portland, at least if I were driving in...
What's happening, Bob, is people who are coming from the east are avoiding stoplights at 10th and Portland and then 10th and Tulsa, taking the back way just a bit, I believe that's just a bit north of Atlas, right?
Yes, but I mean, but the problem, you don't know who they're going to see. They couldn't even seeing somebody, there are, there's legitimate, there's legitimate truck traffic, unfortunately, on 8th Street, to 8th Street locations, and so they would be...
Right. We're not saying, I'm not assessing, but that's, that's what's happening. When you go down 8th, you avoid the lights at 10th and Portland, and you avoid the next stoplight, which is an unprotected left turn at 10th and Tulsa. So when you come down west, east, westbound on 10th Street from Portland, you have, there's no left turn lane, and there's noise there. Is there a stoplight at 10th and Tulsa? That's right. But it doesn't have a left turn, right?
It does have a left lane, and it's a arrow with a...
Arrow, left turn, okay. I'm sorry about that. But that's what's, that's why 8th catches this traffic in that particular vicinity.
So approving the application, like the protesters are saying, you're increasing truck traffic on 8th Street by definition. You guys will go on 8th Street because it's too much trouble to go to 10th and Portland and down, and you can't go across the railroad tracks, so therefore, you're condemning a neighborhood.
No, we, we have always told all of our drivers, we tell them to take Tulsa, whether, you know, when one of our drivers has gone down 8th Street, I want to know about it, especially if they're rumbling down and the, driving in erratic behavior. Unfortunately, I do know our trucks do take 8th Street, some of our bobtails.
Well, I'm not smart enough to know what the solution is, Mike, about...
Would it, would it be possible to ban truck, I mean, we can't, but I'm saying, would it even be possible to ban truck traffic on 8th?
I think, I haven't driven all the way, but I think it'd be kind of a challenge because as Mr. Naefy says, is there's uses that go west of Portland on 8th that are, involve some trucks.
The problem is with this...
And Connolly's down there, too.
There's, you've got so many mixed and odd uses adjacent to one another in this area, even in this and plat, that's, there's a little exclusion because it's I-2 already. That little piece right there that we own, that's the mini storages, it's zoned I-2. It's just, it's, it's rough, but that's the way this neighborhood, you know, the RMH-2 right there, it says that it's mobile home, but that's an asphalt. They make concrete on that land.
Some of the protesters mentioned, though, that there is, apparently, the city has put signage up on a prohibiting multi-axle, one- and two-axle. Is that true?
I can't, I don't know.
I, if they, if they have had a sign there, I'm not saying they have or haven't.
And I believe still, even if there is signs, they can unload and loading, including all the public streets.
But they're not allowed through traffic on it, as I understand. And in genocidal, you say what could be done? That may be one thing that could be done, and perhaps has already been done, but it could be enforced. But the question is, you know, if I pull down there with my multi-axes, am I going to one of those, or am I going through?
Keep in mind that 8th dead ends there. I mean, it does dead end, right?
Yes.
At your property affected.
Correct.
Yeah.
Where would you have the entrance to your new warehouse along Tulsa?
Honestly, we're still, we're so...
Can you hold it, can you, have you looked at it enough that you could hold it to the north so that it would be kind of difficult for the traffic to go down 8th Street?
The plans that I have been seeing mostly would bring, would bring, most trucks would still want to come down Tulsa because they would enter into our complex. Everything is on Tulsa. 8th is a tough turn on a semi. I don't know why any of our trucks...
Well, if you could keep your entrance to the north, that would keep it away from those houses right there, the lady that's got the duplex.
I have, I have seen plans, I have seen traffic flow plans because we're trying to figure out how we want the trucks to flow, where the trucks would come in from the north and come in to end and then...
Would you be willing to do that?
Yeah.
Keep the entrance as close to that north property line as you can keep it?
Yeah.
That would alleviate some of the problem, I think.
We'd be willing, we'd be willing to do that, yes.
Well, what I'd, what I'd like to see is, approving this application without any kind of protection or idea or understanding about what can happen to stop the truck traffic on 8th Street, I'm not competent to figure it out. If there is a sign, you know, two axles only, well, then somebody's not enforcing it. If there's stop signs that you say that are being run, somebody's not enforcing it. But, but I'd like to have traffic consult with the neighbors of you guys about what really to do because if we, I mean, I'm suggesting a continuance until we figure this out because I think that with, with what you're proposing, it's just another bunch of trucks, even though you're saying, "My trucks don't do that." My truck driver's tired, and I can turn on 8th Street and go that way, and I'm not going to get caught, and nobody's going to have, there's no consequence. So what I'd like to hear is from traffic or somebody with an innovative answer about what to do about stopping all of it. What yours may be, even though you're saying not, but what's going on on 8th Street in spite of the fact that there's stop signs and there's restrictions on the size of vehicles? I'd like to hear from traffic when they look at this problem, that what innovative solution there could be, because there has to be something that would prevent the trucks entering on 8th Street and going a straight shot over where the other businesses are. Would you agree to that?
Certainly.
What do you, I mean, so, that's what I propose.
You know, I will say from a planning perspective, I mean, this is the kind of issue, this conflict of different uses, and it's obviously not just Mr. Naefy's company that is causing the issue. This is where you can look at creative traffic calming methods that would prevent the trucks going through there. So it allows the residents to be able to access the homes, but not the trucks. That's the way you would solve it anywhere else in the world.
You making a motion, or?
Well, I'd like to continue it for two weeks.
Are you agreeable, sir?
That's fine.
Okay. We'll, we motion a second then to continue item 10 for two weeks. Cast your votes, and it's continued. Thank you. Thank you very much. Item 11 is being continued. Item 12 is an application by Moore Public Schools to operate a new junior high school and athletic building in AA Agricultural District, Ward 5.
Good evening. My name is Jeff Horn. I am the Assistant Superintendent for Moore Schools, and I'm new at all this, so if you have any questions for me, we only have one issue with the, with the findings or the staff recommendations.
That has to do with T number three and...
Yes, sir.
Right, okay, I understand that.
I spoke with traffic about that today, and then the issue is, by law, we can't spend our dollars off our school property, so to widen a street is something I cannot do.
Well, if I understood the staff, the city agreed a year or more ago that they would provide that turn lane for you?
Well, no, actually, I've met with the city a couple of times over the last two years, and I talked about provide, this recommends a center turn lane for the, it would be the northbound traffic to turn in. We had talked about doing a, basically a decel lane on our property for the southbound traffic that they could get off and have a deceleration lane all across the front of the property.
So are you going to do that or not?
Well, when I mentioned that to traffic today, I didn't meet with traffic originally, and he said he didn't really, that would not help him, the deceleration. I mean, I don't mind doing it. I committed to do it. I don't want to do it if it's not going to, I don't want to spend the money if it's not going to help.
Well, it'd help you.
To some degree, yes. It does help get some of the traffic off of what's going, you know, will be...
Well, I'm thinking of your patrons coming that way.
Yes, yes, yes. So, I mean, it's something we can do, yes. Don't mind doing it at all.
I agree with Commissioner Gales. It sounds like something that would actually benefit your patrons if they're trying to either come to work or drop students off.
We would certainly do it.
But then what, what is the status of the turn lane in the middle of the street? Delete T3?
Yeah, traffic told us that they learned, our staff told us in our meeting, that they learned that the city had agreed a year or more ago with that Senator...
Right.
Turn lane, which helps from the other direction.
Right. We met, you know, we have two schools actually being constructed in Okla, actually, three, sorry, in Oklahoma City right now, but we met about two of those over the last two years. There's one on Portland and then the one on Pennsylvania.
Well, staff agrees and the applicant agrees, we don't need T...
Well, staff agrees and the applicant agrees, we don't need TE number three, which is the widening south of Pennsylvania.
But not because we don't need it done, just because they're not going to do it?
Right, exactly, because the city's going to do it.
Are there protests?
Uh, we do have two people signed up. Elaine Shortly?
I'm Jim Hodges, Architect on Project. The previous slide up there with the colored rendering is actually incorrect, that was the slide we had presented to the board when we started designing the building. The, the black and white that I gave to you is actually the way the drawings came out, we, we mirror flipped it, it's like this side is flipped over, so it, otherwise it's the same.
Right, thank you. Now, Ms. Shortly, please. And if you would give us your name and address, please.
Elaine Shortly, 2201 South Jamie Drive.
Okay, thank you.
I'm not here to protest the school, but I am here because our property is directly adjacent to the school property to the south, and we've received virtually no details as to the traffic plan, which was just discussed, which is a concern because Pennsylvania is simply a two-lane road between southwest 134th and 149th. Obviously, traffic congestion is going to be a concern for us. We're also concerned as our property joins the school property, we have barbed wire fencing now, we're not sure about any type of fencing or landscaping plan to separate our property from the school property. And the notice that we received regarding this hearing also spoke of an easement, a 10-foot easement for sewer line that, you know, the way we read it makes it sound like that easement is, is on our property for the sewer line, and we're unclear about that. So, you know, we're basically here to get answers as opposed to protest the building of the school.
Well, our Public Works Department would have to tell us where the easement is, because I don't see anything that, in my information, that reflects where it is. But it apparently runs along the east-west line.
What it says in the notice that we received is that it's a 10-foot easement for sanitary sewer line across a 10-foot strip of land lying south and adjacent to the south line of the above-described property. So whatever lawyer here is here can tell me what that means.
Actually, I'd like to have someone from our Public Works Department come out and tell us, and they're able to listen to the meeting, so they should come forward.
Okay.
Traffic is, you're going to get traffic from a junior high school, there's no question about it, at least two times a day, and that's just a fact of life.
Right.
Want to check and see if someone's back there? Give some minute, we'll see if somebody from Public Works is back there.
Okay.
Okay.
Good afternoon. I'm, I'm not sure which easement are you talking about, do you have map where you can tell me?
We've got the description here, which is right, which is bottom, talks about the easement.
I haven't seen this, but anyway, we can look at it in detail and discuss this, but without knowing, having more information, I can't really comment on that, I, I have to look at it in more detail, that's what I say.
Well, if we, go ahead. Get that for her, right? You can get her that information where that easement is.
Yes, yes.
And Ms. Gales, what I would suggest is, you know, the easement is there.
Yeah, period.
It's not, wherever it is, if it's on, along the north side of your land, or on the south side of the school land, it is where it's going to be.
Right.
And I don't see how that really relates to this case.
Well, and it's not going to move.
But that's my point, the easement is there and-
We're just, we're just trying to get information as, you know, people that are directly affected here, because we haven't received any.
He can get you that information, that's what he just said, so.
The easement is an existing easement that lies along the south line of this property, it's just included in their legal description describing their property that's being rezoned.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, okay.
Thank you very much. Gary Rowland, do you want to talk?
My name is Gary Rowland, I live at 14100 South Pennsylvania Avenue, directly across the street east from the proposed site. Again, I'm here to support the school, having raised three sons, all graduated from the Moore School system, and now with grandchildren in the Moore School system, we're excited about the new, new school. Could you clarify the traffic situations for traffic controls or the street improvement down Pennsylvania, please?
Well, the discussion we had a minute ago is that there will be a center turn lane provided, and the school has just told us that they will have a southbound-
Deceleration lane?
Deceleration lane.
So, the improvement of Pennsylvania will only take place from 134th South to the south property line of the school, would that be correct?
Well, it would probably be longer than that to allow the traffic to queue, but, I mean, I'm not a traffic engineer, so I can't give you exact measurements of what it would be, but it would obviously be designed to allow for traffic control onto the school property.
Okay.
I can't tell you any more than that, with the Planning Commission, not the Traffic Commission.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I, I think maybe the question really is, are there more generalized improvements planned for this section of Pennsylvania, or are they really just talking about widening it for this purpose?
All we're hearing-
Do you know the answer to that?
All we're talking about today is what's being done specifically to accommodate the school. Commissioners, no one else has signed up. I'll move the application deleting TE 3 and including the, as the superintendent said, the decelerate lane southbound on the school property only. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve item 12 as conditioned, cast your votes, and it's approved, thank you.
I'm serious about this, Bob, I feel out of the morning. Gary Rowland.
You're Gary Wright? I'm sorry, had it in front of me. Do you have something to add to what's been said?
Well, I have a question about the, the development-
Give us your name and address.
Gary Wright.
Thank you.
2337 Jamie Drive.
Okay.
I live on the last house right there at the Y. Okay, I have a pond in the backyard, and I get the, the water from the, from the north development and from the school property, I get that runoff to keep the pond full, or at least, you know. And I just want to know if, when they develop this, if they're going to change the direction of the, of the water flow, or whether they're going to put in sewers, are they going to cut me off, or what's going to do about the water drains?
I have no idea how to answer that question. You've got an engineer for the, somebody from the school district who can tell us what they're planning?
We have had, this, the site was designed by a civil engineer to comply with the Oklahoma City water retention requirements. There is a ravine or a draw that feeds his pond that drains through there, and we've tried to avoid that, we've kept our development to the east of that draw, so that we're not going to affect his pond. We will have to retain water to the extent that is required by Oklahoma City, and the civil engineers have designed that, and I understand that that is being approved.
Could you guys get with him and, and kind of work that out?
Yeah. That, that's something you could best discuss with the school district, we won't have any control.
The point I'm saying is that right now, there's no retention, it's just draining through, and that may be what's feeding his pond.
Well, and, and I believe that's what he's asking for, but I'm just asking for a little communication between you guys, so he, he knows what's going on.
Yes, we can, we can get him coffee and everything.
Take us out of that discussion, basically.
And they reduce his water in his pond to some extent, because we're required to retain water that's just running through now.
Okay, thank you. All right.
We are on item 13, which is PUD 1524, it's an application by Quick Menzy Development Corporation to rezone 3400 Northwest 178th Street from PUD 995 to PUD 1524 in Ward 8.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, my name is Derek Millican with JGVE Engineering, and I'll be the, I'm the professional engineer for the project, I've prepared the PUD application. Basically, just a real quick summary, because you have the paperwork in front of you, it's an 8.75 acre multifamily R3M townhouse development, there will be 69 lots, 69 dwelling units. We, we received the concern about the emergency access to Morning Sky Lane on the east side of the development from city staff, and there won't be an issue with providing emergency access at that location, we'll, we'll revise the plan to address that issue. I also wanted to say quickly about the traffic impacts related to the development, with it, with it currently being, or previously being planned to be a commercial or office-type development, going to the residential, even, even though it's a multifamily, it would, it would have significantly less trips. I'm coming up with about 39 vehicle trip ends added in the AMP hour, and 45 vehicle trips added in the PNP hour. With that, I'll hand it over to Mr. Quick, if he's got any comments, or if you have any questions.
Okay.
Any questions, commissioners, we have people signed up, so, okay.
While they're coming up. Chairman, I have concerns about this application, cause of negotiations that went on when we did the original PUD, make this office commercial and limit density, now we're coming in with a, an R3 density of 69 units backing up to this residential area. I think it, I'm not consistent with the original PUD, and it's certainly, in my opinion, too dense for where it is, and we were trying to put office commercial there after some rather protracted negotiations, if you'll recall. And the single entrance bothers, but that's another point, I'm, I'm not down to the entrance point.
I'm Gary, I'm really-
Sorry? Well, I-
Something to add, we do have someone signed up, do you want to-
Okay, all right, I would, I'll wait to address Mr. Gales.
Okay. Andrew Oster? Your name and address for the record, please?
Andrew Oster, and address is 16800 Shore Run Drive. I am a Rose Creek resident, and also sit on the Rose Creek Board of Directors. And while we were a little late in trying to review this material, some of the concerns that Rose Creek homeowners and, and board members came across were, as relates to the, the application and design statement, we didn't see any substantial discussion, or even minimal discussion on screening and buffering between this development and Rose Lake or on the eastern side, the, where, where it is adjacent directly to Rose Creek. And there, there is talk of a, of a wall that should separate commercial and industrial zones, but nothing about the residential piece. We're, we're, we would like to see some more of that buffering in the discussion in the design statement, and specifically on the map, I don't know if you have the ability to pull up the master development plan, map. That concern came up on unit 21, it, there just doesn't appear to be that much room to even put buffering. It's on the south side, unit 21, if you can kind of see where I'm looking at. So, for instance, in Rose Creek's PUD, we, we have something about like six paragraphs where we talk about how we try and buffer and protect against light pollution, noise pollution, and stuff like that. So after going through this as, as quickly as we could when we got the notices, I don't really see that the application quite meets all of the standards for the pub, application, there's not a discussion of minimum acreage for common space that's required, and we're I, I'm, I'm apologize, that wraps up the comments and concerns that we had, but those were what we wanted to bring to the commission, so, thank you very much.
Well, staff, correct me if I'm wrong, but there's not a screening requirement between residential uses, is there? I mean, so, not under the code? This is a multifamily application. So there would be? So there would be, and the PUD provides for maybe six-foot screening with brick columns, 24-foot centers.
That was, that was our concern, and I was, again, I'm not exactly used to digging through codes and stuff like that, so it looked like, to the extent that there was a requirement of some kind, there should be some general discussion in the, in the design statement.
Apparently there is, there's site proof screening with, on 24-foot centers, so.
Okay, thank you.
Gary, your response or comments? Give us your name and address, if you would.
I'm Gary Quick, I'm the president of Quick Menzy Development Corporation, where the ones filed this application, and obviously will comply with any landscape and designs that's required by the city, and normally in our areas, we even go further than that. May I add one other thing real quick over here? This is not going to be 69, it's only going to be 67, those two are the lots, lot number 18, and I take that back, I can't see, that's 16, and lot number, it, they'll have to scroll down, because I can't see it, and lot number 38 are going to be dedicated to either parks or playgrounds.
Okay.
So there's 67 rather than 69.
Thank you. Okay, additional discussion, commissioners?
I have no additional comments, I just think the density is, is out of whack for this, this, and I can't support it. Design-wise, there is a single entrance in off of Murphy Boulevard, that works okay for me, frankly, but it could be problematic for, for the people that live there, getting it out, 67 of them. But that said, my objection is density. They've addressed the, that's an emergency, they've addressed the emergency access, it's not shown on our staff report, but that unnamed street running out of the addition to the, to the south, that stub will, will remain there, and they'll have an emergency access out on 115.
There's an added TE that says the emergency access to the south must remain.
Yeah, so that's addressed, but again, my problem is density.
Any other discussion, commissioners? Go ahead. Well, I just, I'm sorry, Bob, to Nick's point that you, I, I don't recall perhaps quite as well as you do, Commissioner Gales, the history of the earlier discussions with respect to this property, if you could give me just a 50,000 foot on that, I'd appreciate.
The earlier discussion was, I believe, the whole history of it is, there was discussion of one of the additions to the east being very dense, I'd even made a comment at one point, that no one would ever build houses that dense over there out in the hinterlands. But we were concerned with, with overall density, not only here, but to the north and to the east, and back south is, south of this little addition is a larger addition, which is not very dense, but, but the density we were concerned about, we suggested to the developers at the time that we needed less density, and they wanted to accommodate that by stripping out 178th Street all the way back to the section line with C3, which we modified. which we modified in this section to be office commercial, office and light commercial. That hasn't developed. When the applicant contacted me, I, I raised the same discussion, and the, the real answer I got back was, well, we're still several years away from building offices. We can build these now and make more money doing it this way. Well, I don't think that's necessarily the answer to just compromise the, the density because it's now expedient. I read the protests, which are numerous, they're all basically the same. Obviously, it's not supported by the neighborhood. That, that's also a consideration, primary consideration. I think, I just, it's too dense, sticking to sixty-seven units, right in the middle of the, up to this neighborhood that wasn't planned that way.
Any other discussion, Commissioners?
Yeah, yes. Bob, okay.
A comment, and that is when I read this application, and, and you have an entire neighborhood that bought homes under P U D nine, nine-five, and that's what they expected to see happen, and here, I think it's nine years later, that's not happening. And I just think that this is something that we should be very cautious about when people invest their money in a house, and they, this is what's going to happen. There's going to be offices to the north, and particularly on whatever that drive is, Jim Something or Other Drive, that's the entrance to this place, with sixty-seven units flowing into this area, even though it's gated, traffic on one hundred and seventy... I just think it's not fair to the people that live in the neighborhood to have this kind of development usurping what was ordinarily a low-density office, commercial, little strip there, and that was all agreed to and understood by the residents. So, I agree with you, Commissioner Gales. I can't support this application.
No one else? No one else has signed up? Signed up? Any other discussion or Janice?
My question really is about whether it is, it is more about density than use. I mean, is there a density level at which townhomes would be acceptable to you? Or is it really that you want to see the original and apparently somewhat vigorously negotiated uses?
Well, the, the original deal was office warehouse, sure. As Commissioner Bright mentioned, obviously, people relied on that. Would a less-dense deal work? Yeah, perhaps. Have I done the math and looked at a layout and got to figure out what that is? No. I was looking at sixty-nine, now sixty-seven. You know, sixty-seven lots that back up to, what, four, five, about ten on the south and five on the east, pretty dense. You know, when we do our residential zoning comparisons and say you're supposed to have seventy-five percent of the contiguous...
Oh, yeah.
...face, well, you know, and that's R one to R one. I understand that, but, you know, this is a far cry from, from anything like that. And as Bob said, if you, if you bought there on one hundred and seventy-seventh court relying on that, you're probably an unhappy camper today.
Okay. Well, in all respect, Mr. Gales, I understand your position, but this was nine years ago when we were processing possibly what might be happening out in that area. Right now, there's not a call for office buildings, but there's tremendous call for townhomes that are upgraded and are, that are located in that area because there are so many empty nesters have all their children and grandchildren around that area. And I would also respectfully submit that there's only three, three lots in the Rosewood Villas, Rose Lake Villas, south of us. There's only three lots that are not buffered because we've got a fifty-foot pipeline all the way from the very, from your very southeast corner up there, all the way, see, going northwest, and it stops right there. There, there's a fifty-foot pipeline easement in there, so there's nothing. And, and all those people have, have six- and eight-foot fences along the way, so they, they don't even see the pipeline easement anyway, but there's fifty foot there. If you go from that point back southwest at a little bit of an angle, that is a thirty-five foot drainage easement, so homes are going to be at least fifty-five or sixty foot away from any of that. And then, if you go back to the west, there is a huge common area that there are no homes built on, so the only homes that will, will be affected are there three, and that will be three from that very, very, very southwest corner where the gate is. There's three homes there that will back up to the neighborhood that we're proposing. And again, I respectfully submit, we're not the first ones that've come in here and tried to change a putt. I mean, that's, you know, you, you take your land as you see it at one point in time, but if it, if, if the situation changes, and economy changes, growth pattern of homes change, then you have to go, kind of go with them, and that's all we're doing. We feel like there's a big call for townhomes. They're going to be very, very, very nice, nice townhomes, and we feel like we're not, I guess what I'm saying is I'm not apologizing respectfully for what we're attempting to do here.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners?
I get, guess, follow-up comments.
Sure.
Well, then, maybe we ought to build apartments there, make it even worse. No, it, it's not appropriate right there. Too dense, and I'd move to now.
Second. Gave a motion and second to deny. Any further discussion? Cast your votes. It is denied.
Thanks, Rick. Gales, thanks.
Items fourteen through seventeen have been continued until February the thirteenth. Item eighteen is ABC eight hundred, application by Bert McInally for an ABC three overlaying I two and the scenic river overlay district at one two two eight southwest Second Street and Ward six.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Bud Scott, three eleven South Klein, on behalf of the applicant, Bert McInally, managing member of Big Dog Holding LLC, owner of the subject property in Olive Block Five in that area. We're requesting an ABC three overlay for ten thousand total square feet, but the actual building itself is three thousand square feet roughly. The parking lot that abuts that is about seven thousand square feet, and it's primarily used for special events, so anytime there's a concert out in that area or a street festival, food festival, it allows us to serve in that area, but only on temporary basis, so...
I'm real familiar with the site, having been a lifelong customer of Sterling's until they were sent away. How are you going to control alcohol consumption and where people go with it if you've got a seven or eight thousand square foot essentially parking lot?
The, the outdoor area, and the applicant actually owns the standard barricades, the metal railing barricades, that are utilized anytime there's a special event there right now, when there's a concert in that area. They also have onsite security that's hired by the property owner, so anytime there would be an event where service would be allowed in that area, it would be firmly secured by the barricades as well as private security. The rest of the time would all be limited to the actual premises for the powerhouse at the farmer's market, which is...
Why can't you do ABC overlay on the building itself? And then, if you have such overflow into that parking lot, why can't you go get a special permit for that like everybody else does?
Commissioner Gales, my response on that would be that we already have three to five events per year there, so coming in and requesting a special event use for that really just becomes more of a problematic issue and an expense issue for the applicant. This allows them to get the highest invested use out of their property. There's really no one, no property owners in the surrounding area that dispute this or that are opposed to the use of the property. In fact, everyone supports this use because it brings business into their locations.
Well, I certainly don't have a problem with the use or any of that. I just have a problem with zoning the whole parking lot as an ABC. You know, next guy comes in there and no telling what's going to happen. I, I just think you need to somehow work around that issue for me. It doesn't work.
I have a question.
Yes.
Legal, perhaps, Dan. Is there a way that we could approve an ABC three overlay application for the parking lot and the building? But the portion that's on the parking lot, could that be restricted to just to special events that are...
No.
It is what it is, though.
Okay.
Which, which brings me to my point, and that is that I think that the tools that we have to deal with alcohol consumption on a land use basis are grossly insufficient to deal with the real world. And we have these ABC one, two, three categories. They, they're kind of one-size-fits-all or three-size-fits-all, and they don't comport with the kinds of events that are occurring, and they don't give us either the ability to deal with, you know, real detail realistically or to tailor things the way we need to have them tailored to keep them from becoming problematic in the future. Zoning is forever. We give this parking lot an ABC overlay, either this thing succeeds or it doesn't, but it's going to be there forever, and that is just a big problem. I know that there are real constraints, both with respect to the state law and with respect to the city ordinances, but I think we need a comprehensive look at the way we deal with this stuff.
Well, when we've attempted to do that in the past, because, you know, the biggest thing runs with the land perpetuity, we've always been advised, Dan, jump in here and cut a street, that basically we're handcuffed, but it's all the Eagle Commission, and this is all we can do.
And I think we need to be working with them and maybe working with the legislature and, I mean, doing whatever it is we need to do to make that change.
Well, in general, I'm just, an overall statement, which does affect planning. In general, our liquor laws are okay.
Yes.
This is one piece of it, but there are other pieces of it, and they're, they're holding back this community in this state.
Well, here's my question about the downtown airpark that's now a concert venue, right? I mean, they have an ABC one, I mean, I assume they can serve beer at those venues, at the zoo? I, I assume so, right?
I don't know.
So, you've, you're carrying out there on a blanket, and you have fifteen, twenty acres of drinking. It's, the only permitted portion would be the portion where the beer is actually sold. Is that right? I, I think it's apropos to what you said, Janice, is that it's kind of out of control, you know, for, but, you know, good.
The airpark was done under a P U D, and that, that tool could be used here.
Say again?
The airpark was done, was zoned under a P U D.
Right.
With certain restrictions on number of events, times, days, and hours, and...
And, and service of alcoholic beverages, I assume, and where that can happen.
Right.
Because it's legal in the P U D.
Well...
I, I think my client would be interested in working on some sort of formulated P U D for that area. The primary concern is actually getting the ABC three for the actual facility itself. The parking lot was more of an afterthought. My client was working under the assumption for a number of years that actually Olive Block Five was actually ABC three designated, and we'd had a number of special events over the last three years where outdoor alcohol service was allowed, and that was going through the city process of acquiring a special event permit. So, everyone was basically under the assumption this was already ABC three, so we're just trying to go back and fix this small area to comply with the use that we see for the building that's there and the potential build-out.
Well, now, would, would it work then if they came in with a best P U D or P U D that says, you know, ABC three in the building, that restrict it to only special events in the parking lot, and describe what the barricades would be and what the enforcement, what you would do, would that work?
That would be done.
I think that's, I think that's what you maybe ought to consider.
And that's what J J was basically, that's what J J was basically...
Yeah, no, no, that's what I'm saying.
Or, you know, as I said before, I have no problem with the ABC in the building right now if, if you want to go that route.
Absolutely.
It's entirely up to you guys.
Maybe what we should do is come back with a, either spot or putt for the parking lot area and work on designation for that, and go ahead and move with the actual facility itself, the three thousand square foot.
There. Yeah. Move approval of the application as it relates only to the building and not the parking lot.
Gave a motion and second to approve item eighteen as limited. Cast your votes, and that's approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think anything we can do to help that area would be, it's going to be needed. I'm glad that they're doing this. Item nineteen is P U D fifteen nineteen, application by Marshall Mays to rezone four zero five Southeast Fifty-Nine Street from I two to P U D fifteen nineteen and Ward four.
Mr. Chairman, Miss, the Commissioners, my name is Jay Spradling. I represent the applicant. This is a, an application to permit the use of the subject site for automobile recycling and scrap operation. I think you may have seen some pictures of similar operations operated by Mr. Mays. We have tried to accommodate some of the staff's concerns with regard to the noise generated by the operation by moving the building in which the, the automobile crusher is located further to the east. I think your drawing there shows it to be in the original location. We have suggested and submitted a revised master development plan in which that building that you see on the screen up there has been moved fifty feet further to the east to eliminate or at least further reduce the effect of the noise on the residences to the west of the property. Moving the building further to the east is a little bit difficult because of the turning radiuses of the trucks that are servicing the facility. We do have an issue with some of the comments in the staff report with regard to sanitary sewer. There will be no more than five people on that site at any one time, and the plan is to use an aerobic system for wastewater disposal. So, there, there will, we do not plan to extend sanitary sewer lines to serve the property. Sites over six acres in size and an aerobic system would be adequate to dispose of the wastewater generated there. With regard to the recommendation contained in item number two of the staff recommendations, no crushing or shredding shall be permitted. The, the business is the crushing of automobiles. The business is not the shredding of automobiles, so we, we would, would agree that there will be no shredding of automobiles, but we need to be permitted under the P U D to crush the automobiles, stack them on trucks, and move them to Texas where they will be shredded or otherwise disposed of. If you have any other questions, I'd be happy to try and answer those at this time.
I have some questions and maybe some comments. We have a similar facility overall for Reno and Martin Luther King, and we have those, those explosions from those cars being crushed, and those things are felt like miles away, you know, at least a couple of miles away, you feel that impact of that explosion of those cars blowing up, and, and it's become a real nuisance, and we can't, now that it's in place, we can't get anything done about it, so, is this the same thing you'd be doing?
No, I, well, I can't speak to the one on, on the other site that you mentioned. I, I don't know what their policies are, I don't know how they do the, the work that they do, but I, I feel confident that the operation here will not have explosions occur because of the way that they process the automobiles there. And, and one of the pictures that you may have seen, there are some oil and fluid collection tanks where the cars are picked up and dropped on a spike to drain the oil pans and the transmissions. Those, those fluids are picked up and disposed of. Gas, the gas tanks are removed from the cars, so they're, in the, in the crushing operation, there would be no explosion due to the, do the gas tanks, and that may be what is happening at the other location, but... at the other location, but I don't believe that there's ever been an explosion on any one of the other sites that Mr. Mays has operated, and, and there are several in the Oklahoma City metro area.
Maybe that's what's happened, maybe he's taking tanks out, I don't know, but I know we had that problem.
From the pictures that I hope you all have seen, this is a very, pretty clean operation, and one that's efficient, efficiently operated, and I don't think that to the extent that there is a similar operation on the property immediately adjacent to the north, it's not a use that's inconsistent to the area.
Jay, what are the hours of operation of this, of this, when do they open, when do they close?
I don't know, but Mr. Mays is here, I'll, I'll get an answer for that question.
As far as explosions...
Sir, sir, give us your name and address, please.
Marshall Mays, fifty-eight hundred Cardinal Lane.
Thank you very much.
I've been doing this forty years, I've yet to have an explosion.
Okay.
It's a totally different operation, what they're doing on Bass Street than what we do. Hours of operation, just eight to five. It's not a twenty-four hour operation at all.
Seven, seven days a week?
No, no, no.
Five days?
Six, five and a half, six maybe.
And then what, when you, when you close it down at five, and the trucks pick up whatever you've crushed, are they out of the, it's all closed down at five?
Well, I mean, yeah, yeah, there's, there's no not operation, no. We have a, we have a deal on Villa Street right now.
Other than cars, what other kind of, of scrap would you accept there in that location?
Yeah, anything metal.
Have you been down to the operation off of thirty-five and Shields?
Similar to that, I mean, that's the same type of...
Have you ever watched, have you ever looked at the traffic problem that they have there with people lined up all the way to the south, to Fifty-Nine Street, all the way, almost two blocks the other way, trying to get in off of Shields?
Yes.
I, I can't imagine us putting a shredding and scrap metal on Fifty-Nine Street that has that possibility. I just, I can't support this at all.
What, what, address some, the property is nice, so they can go off Fifty-Nine Street and get inside.
Well...
We have an operation like this on Villa, right now, and you don't have that problem there. I mean, it's part of the, on, that, on, on High Street is, is out of the way you come off the street.
So, do you stockpile your, your scrap on, on the site?
Well, you have to unload it, yes.
Okay, but does everything that comes in during the day, does it go out that same day?
Oh, no.
Okay.
No.
We just got through a proven one on Fifty-Nine Street, just west of Sooner, and that, that operation probably is one of the, should be, I, I hope, but they tell us that, and of course, there's a railway there, they say everything that comes in will go out the same day, either by truck or by rail, and probably about ninety percent of it by rail. I, you know, I, we have a problem, and forgive me, I, you know, we fought this problem down on Shields forever, and I, and it's under a special use permit. I don't really understand why we're putting, putting up with it, but it is probably one of the worst operations, and right on, you know, a visibility corridor in Oklahoma City, that's, we've got a junkyard right, you know, next to it, and we can't control the height of the, the stuff that they stack up, we can't control the traffic or anything else, and I just can't see putting something like that on Fifty-Nine Street.
Let me address that issue. Because this is a PUD, there, there are some limitations that you can include in this PUD, and the hours of operation is certainly one, the height of the materials, and, you know, we might be able to work with the staff and the commission to address some of your concerns with regard to the, the in and out operation. So at this point, I, I would not want to be tarred with somebody else's brush in terms of, you know, somebody else is operating it in an inefficient and unsightly manner, that, that that translates over to the fact that he will do the same thing.
I understand that, and, you know, the thing, the staff's recommendation, no crushing or shredding on that property, and I, I would not, you know, even if you could guarantee me, I would not go along with, with your crushing of, of auto bodies on that property. So, you know, I'm sorry, I can't support it. And I would recommend denial of the application.
Second? We have a motion in a second for denial. Any further discussion? Cast your votes. It is denied. Thank you for your time.
Here on item twenty, which is PUD fifteen twenty, an application by Thomas Metal Group to rezone sixty-four fourteen Eastern Avenue from I two Modern Industrial to PUD fifteen twenty in Ward four.
D. Benham Kirk, two oh one Robert S. Kerr Avenue, Suite seven ten, on behalf of the applicant. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman. Matter comes before you today with regard to a request for rezoning, and the purpose of the rezoning is for the applicant to become compliant. We recently learned that because of the nature of the outdoor activity that's taking place on the, the site of the PUD, that we may not be completely code compliant. So we have worked with the city in terms of a solution to the problem through the PUD and the master design statement. We have accepted all of their recommendations, and we accept the conditions for the staff recommendation with regard to approval. Mr. Allen, I believe, has had a site visit and, and seen the operation. This is a much different operation than the one that you were just being asked to consider and approve. No crushing, no shredding, not a salvage facility. Along the south edge of the property, the, the area that's affected really is the back part of, of the property, which is open area, but it's, it's screened by natural vegetation, and it's a partially a floodplain area, so there's not much you can do with it from a development standpoint. But the truck traffic comes in and out along the south edge there, and we have, because of the depth of the property and where they're taking the materials into the back of the property, we don't have a stacking problem. We're also only a half a mile from the interstate, so there's not much in the way of interior, interior arterial issues from a traffic standpoint. So we accept the staff's conditions to the recommendation, and would ask that the commission would vote favorably on the application.
This operation has been there for, how many years is this?
Been there for about three years.
About three years, and I go by there probably two or three times a month. I didn't even realize there was a operation there, because actually, the, the lay of the land, when you pull in, you actually go up a little knoll, and most of the scrap and everything else is at the back of the property. As he said, along the east side of the property, there's a, a tree line and a creek, and in fact, you don't even go back that far, so there's, there's a good buffer on that, on the east side of it. And what this is, you know, they're, they're in operation, they've been in operation, we've had no problems with them in that area that I know of. The only thing I would request, and I mean, this is just a request from me, is that we would gravel at least another hundred feet to the east with real heavy gravel, so that we don't pull mud and stuff out on the, on eastern.
I believe we could accept that modification, Mr. Allen.
And that would, I would recommend, is there any protesters?
No one signed up.
Okay. With that, and if you would accept that as a...
I think you make that a TE, Jim.
Yeah, we'll make it a, a, a technical...
Correction.
Yeah, and if you, if you would accept that, then that would be my motion to approve, okay? With that exception.
Right.
I think the difference here is, one, it's a different operation for me, but I mean, generally, I'm, I'm not at all a fan of metal recycling, recognizing, of course, that we need it in some form, but as I look at this area and what's around it, there's, it's, it's well buffered by industrial uses, and it's in an industrial area, the mobile home park back to the east, there's a significant spread there, as well as to the mobile home park to the north. The other previous application that I had a significant concern about how close that was to the houses, in fact, they were in the applicant's pictures, clearly visible, so this was a different, different look for me.
Sorry. So is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve item twenty, adding TE number two for the gravel request. Cast your votes, and that's approved. Janice, you're voting? Thank you.
Item twenty-one is SPUD... Item twenty-one is SPUD seven forty-three, an application by the LaSalle Group to rezone twenty-two thirty-two Southwest One Hundred and Fourth Street from I one Single Family to SPUD seven forty-three in Ward five.
Good afternoon, David Box, five two two Callcord Drive, here on behalf of the applicant. Also with me is John Featherston with the LaSalle Group, and Gary Nolan with Smith Roberts Baldsweller. What we have is an application for an SPUD on three point nine four acres on One Hundred and Fourth West of Pennsylvania. This is a, a unique parcel in that it's a ten acre tract right now with one single-family residence that happens to be an eight thousand to ten thousand square foot mansion. The folks that lived in the mansion have since passed away, and the estate is in the process of selling the property. My client is a group out of Dallas that operates memory care units, and when they looked at this parcel, it met all the criteria that they looked at. The demographics were there, so they set out to draft the SPUD, and when they did so, it differs in, in a few respects from the SPUDs that this commission is used to see. That is, instead of the seventy percent brick, thirty percent EPIS, they demanded that they ride in ninety percent brick and only ten percent EPIS. They have brought some brick samples with them today, and you can see in the elevations, what you'll see is an attractive building that's almost entirely brick and stone. Additionally, what they've done is come up with a landscape plan, and this is referenced here in this exhibit right here, and you can see it's significant. They have significant landscaping on the front edge on One Hundred and Fourth, they have significant landscaping in the back, and then they have two garden areas within what would be kind of the interior of the actual building footprint. One of the issues that's been raised by some of the protesters deals with drainage. So the way we have set out to deal with that is, you can see a detention pond, and as of today, Mr. Nolan has dealt with deer, and they have come up with a, a solution within this detention pond that we are confident not only will meet the city's requirements, but we will exceed those requirements. We believe that once the detention pond is installed, we will reduce the rate of historic flow across that property. So as it sits today, it's actually worse than what it will be after this development. As you can see, we have a significant buffer between where the house, any house would be to the south, and where our building is, and so now, if you were in one of those homes, you'd look out and see a field, what you'd see now is a field, but you'd see a lot of well-maintained manicured landscaping. The other way that this SPUD differs from normal SPUDs is it's a single use. Not only is it a single use, but they further limit that single use to just memory care facility. The way these facilities are constructed is the hallways are six feet wide. That's significant, because that means you could not have a regular nursing home. They only do memory care patients. That's also significant in the traffic. There won't be any traffic. All of their patients do not drive. My client tells me that there's approximately twelve daytime employees, so as far as traffic, you're looking at twelve people plus any family members that would come. Nighttime, there's four to five employees, so we don't think traffic will be an issue. Hundred and Fourth Street is, is an approved street, and we think it'll handle it. There's another issue dealing with a, what was a collector's street coming up from the south, and I think some of the neighbors have been concerned with having the access from our parcel to their neighborhood. We, we will not have access to the neighborhood, so we're hoping that this development fixes that problem. I'm assuming everyone has, has received the, the letter brief from the protester, and I do want to address one key issue in that. It deals with piecemeal development. Mr. Grove says that this is an example of what the comp plan seeks to avoid, because it's a piecemeal development. We believe that's a misapplication of that policy. That policy deals with if the property owner was going to develop only the four acres out of the ten acres. That's not what we have here. My client only owns and controls the three point nine five acres. Therefore, this is the entirety of the development of the parcel they own. They have no connection to the parcel to the east, they have no control over it. So it's not the scenario in which we have one developer who only chooses to zone four acres. This developer will only own four acres. So with that, we'd be happy to answer any questions, but we think this is a, a use that is compatible with the neighborhood, and I think if you look at this parcel as undeveloped, it's a commercial corridor. There's commercial across One Hundred and Fourth, and this parcel likely will be commercial. And if you're gonna have a, a commercial use, we think this is a, a very good, low-impact use that serves as a nice buffer to the neighborhood. We'd be happy to answer any questions.
David, what's the patient-to-staff ratio, out of curiosity?
They have forty rooms in total, and there's forty-six beds, so you have twelve daytime employees and at the most, forty-six beds.
Okay. We do have a number of people signed up, Commissioners?
Just one question for Mr. Box.
Well, we're gonna have Eric first, I guess.
Oh, okay, sorry. On the, this goes to Eric's point, but I'll ask you since you raised it. On the property, your property is the southern portion for, as I look at Eric's...
West.
Excuse me, west, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and so who owns your property?
The estate, the Schaefer estate owns it. My client is under contract for the three point nine five acres, so they will own it if the zoning goes through. Just the three point nine five, not the balance. The piecemeal development comes with, if the Schaefers were here, seeking to rezone the three point nine five for speculative use, the comp plan would say, tell us what you're gonna do over here. Here, my client will only own the three point nine five. They don't know, nor do they have any ability to dictate what happens to the east, any more than they do what happens across the street, or five miles down the street.
David, is that Greenbrier Chase, is that open now from the estate?
I believe it stopped, there's a, there's a gate when you get to...
Well, on one of the aerials, it showed a, a road maybe around to that, but you, you're not gonna access anything from that street, though? That's bottom line.
Okay, yeah, that street, it actually, it stops as far as, it stops becoming a collector's street built to city standards. There is some pavement as you go north into the estate, but it's much smaller, and it was designed, I believe, for when the estate had workers come.
Looks like a drive almost accessing the mansion from the east.
Correct.
Yeah, or south, I should say, south.
And we're gonna be removing that pavement as far as what's, what's on our site. You can see there's a little bit of that pavement goes in, we'll be removing that.
You're not gonna read that entire file, are you?
No, I'm gonna give you a portion of it. My name is Eric Rose, I'm an attorney, I represent Greenbrier Kingswood Homeowners Association. I have here copies of the protest petition that was filed, and I didn't send it out to you with my letter brief, so I'm going to put a stack and have them passed around, and they'll be there for your reference, if I may.
You may.
The protest petition, copies of which are being circulated to the commission, include over 300 signatures. There is significant protest of this application. I would also respectfully ask that the people who are here today in protest rise so the commission can see them. Thank you, please be seated. The subject application seeks to zone three, approximately three, out of a 10-acre R1 tract. The depiction on the screen doesn't show the rest of the tract, but it runs east to where you see that north-south line. The hard corner of Southwest 104th and Penn is owned by my client, by the HOA. It is their common area. So, that leaves the space between the area proposed to be rezoned, east to the common area. And on that land is a large home, which I referred to as the mansion, that was originally built by the church, then deeded to the Schaefers, and the Schaefers subsequently put it in their trusts. So, the landowner of the entire 10 acres are the Schaefer trusts, there are two of them. Beneficiaries of those trusts are Michael and Terry Schaefer. The subject application, of course, it joins R1 land, and there is nothing said about the landowner's intentions with respect to the rest of the 10-acre tract. Southwest 104th is a major artery, as you all know. And of course, Mr. Box, in his presentation today, speaks only for the LaSalle Group, which has the area under contract. They don't own it. They'll buy it if the zoning they seek is approved. So, the tract, the entire 10-acre tract, is owned by the Schaefer trusts. No getting around that. And they are, in effect, really the applicants. They've signed letters of authorization to the LaSalle Group based on their real estate purchase contract. The history of this area, I spelled out in the brief for a very important reason, and that is to point out the reasonable expectations of the people who have invested their lives and their fortunes in this neighborhood. At the beginning, when the original plats were done, and they go back to the '70s, actually, Greenbrier was platted in many stages, but if one went to look to the original plat, this particular 10-acre tract was not included, but the plat said, "Reserve for future development." That's not unusual. Many of the Greenswood plats said, "Reserve for future development." And eventually, as the area was built out, they all became R1. So, it's fair to imply that that was the original intention, that this land would remain R1. Not only that, but when Greenbrier management deeded the property to the church that was owned by the Schaefers, they put in a 10-year deed restriction that required the approval of the Greenbrier Architectural Committee as to any structures to be built on that land. Even after that, when the church deeded it to the Schaefers, that 10-year Architectural Committee provision was included. Now, it probably wasn't any good because the grantor of the church doesn't have an architectural approval committee, but the intention is clear that the Schaefers intended that to be R1 land in perpetuity. So, we have an original plat, we have deeds with those restrictions in them. The people who bought there and invested there relied, and they still do, on that area being R1, or at least an R usage, but they never, ever thought that it would be stripped out as commercial. Now, you may say, "Well, that's not what the application is all about." Well, maybe yes, maybe no, we'll see. The heirs, and of course, the big house in the middle that I refer to as the mansion is, of course, R1. Schaefer heirs have a different idea about what should be done with this property than their parents did. The application, if granted, would create a spud with underlying R4, a significant increase in intensification. R1 to R4 is a big jump. Now, Mr. Box would say, "Well, yes, but it's a limited-use R4." Yes, it is, but that would not prevent an applicant for a greater intensity to the east of this land to come in and say, "Well, you took this from R1 to R4. Why would you not greatly intensify the land between this parcel and the common area?" And there are provisions in the comprehensive plan that deal with this, and I quoted them in my brief. And the one that is the most important is found at page 18 in the plan, and it says this, "Encourage unified planning for all adjoining land owned or controlled by a project's developer to ensure proper land use and street relationships. Developers could submit sketch plans for those portions of a development on which planned uses are not definitely known or on which development will not occur for several years." Mr. Box seeks to skirt this requirement by saying, "Well, this property isn't really controlled by the Schaefers." Well, I'm afraid that it is because those trusts have fee simple title to this land. All that the LaSalle Group has is a contract that entitles them to purchase the land if the zoning they seek is approved. That is not an estate in land. A contingent contract to purchase land does not give the purchaser an estate in land. It is the Schaefers who own this land and the rest of it to the east. There's no getting around that. The staff picked up on this in their report at page, well, section four, findings, subsection A. Here's what the staff said. It's consistent with the argument I just made. "The comprehensive plan supports the proposed residential medical use in the urban growth area, but it also calls for unified planning for all property owned by the applicant." Now, I don't think you can skirt that requirement by making a contract with someone else and say, "Now, they control the land." Well, LaSalle Group doesn't control the land. The Schaefers control the land. At the time of the Planning Development Department's review, it was unclear how the area to the east would be developed. Your planners said, "It is unclear how the area to the east will be developed." Now, why would they say that? They say that because it's important, and they say it because the comprehensive plan says that this kind of development should be unified. And by the way, if people could come in and make the argument that Mr. Box just did, then you could skirt that requirement anytime you wanted by just entering into a real estate purchase contract with somebody and say, "Well, I don't control that piece." Well, if you own the land, you do. Now, in this case, the comp plan suggests that the landowner should share with the city, with you, what they have in mind for the rest of the land. This avoids piecemeal zoning, especially next to an R1 district, and as you can see, this surrounded on three sides by R1. Do the Schaefers know what they intend to do? Our best information is that, yes, they do. We have one source of information that says the rest of the tract is already under contract. We have other information that says just the eastern portion is under contract. Sprouts wants that land to the east of the mansion, and it seems like everybody in town knows about it. Now, what the exact contractual arrangements are, I don't know. And Mr. Box is not in a position to tell us, perhaps, because he only represents the LaSalle Group. But when I talked to David the other day, I said, "David, I know you represent the LaSalle Group and not the Schaefers, but they are the owners of the land, and the destiny of that land ultimately is in their hands, and I'll bet I know where you can find them. So, how about you ask them? And how about they show up at the hearing and share with the commission and this city exactly what they want to do?" Well, so far, that hasn't happened. The solution, obviously, to this problem is a PUD for the entire area. But it's hard to do unified planning when the owners of the land are lying behind the log and not telling you what they have in mind. Now, there's another provision in the plan that's also important, and it's about stripping out arteries. Southwest 104th Street, west of Penn, is not officially designated as a major activity corridor, but it should be, or something close to it. It's busy enough and big enough that it should not be stripped out for commercial in the absence of a transition plan. If this area is going to be something else, then there ought to be a plan, a unified plan, to transition it to that something else, especially where it backs up to R1. Now, I suspect there are some who will say, "Well, this is an isolated application. All we can consider today is what is before us." And, Mr. Grove, you are concerned about something that hasn't happened yet. Sprouts isn't here yet. All we have is a congregant care facility, and by the way, we don't have big issues with that facility. We don't have big issues with traffic. The things Mr. Box says about the nature of that use are accurate. They can be an asset to a neighborhood. And we can go back and tinker with the design, you know, we might like a bigger wall out back, things like that. There are, by the way, drainage issues on the entire 10-acre tract. This group may help deal with them with their detention pond. But you can't deal with this application in a vacuum, and that's what the plan says. The plan says, "Don't deal with it. It, an isolated faction, isn't fair to surrounding landowners." And that provision is even stronger when those surrounding landowners are all R1 on three sides, people who have invested in very nice homes over the last 30 to 35 years. Some may say, "Well, we'll deal with Sprouts when it gets here." But by that time, the Schaefers will have a leg up because they will have a more intensified zoning district than they do now. And I'm not suggesting that the commission would necessarily approve of Sprouts. I give the commission much more credit for that. In fact, knowing you as I do, I should think that the commission would be very circumspect about putting a grocery store where the hind end comes out against the neighborhood and next to a neighborhood common area. I don't think you'd rubber stamp that too quickly, but they'll be back. And it seems to me that we could have one discussion, one argument, rather than two or three, and I think that's what the plan is driving at. Unified development of parcels such as this. If they try to come in here with the Sprouts, obviously, my clients are going to resist it. Then you've got to go through all that. So, why not ask the Schaefers to be up front? It's not that hard. Just tell us what you've got in mind. We could develop a really nice PUD on this land with uses such as this one, with maybe some other R uses, maybe even some low-intensity commercial, or we could put a bank there, something like that, that doesn't cause a lot of problems in the neighborhood. But you can't reasonably expect people in this neighborhood to say, "We want a grocery store." That's a very high-intensity use and problematic. So, in a way, I think the Schaefers are sort of gaming the system here, and I think they have a responsibility under the plan to come forward to you, and I think you should ask them to, and say, "Look, how much is it to ask? Or are you going to force us to fight the Sprouts battle somewhere down the road, and who knows what else? There's talk that this mansion's a tear-down, and somebody's going to put some other use there." I think that if we allow people to invest in neighborhoods like this, we should have the decency, just the decency, to say, "Please let us know what you're up to." We'd be glad to sit down with them and say, "You can make lots of money from this land and not damage our property values, but you've got to tell us what you have in mind." And so far, that hasn't happened. There are one or two people in the neighborhood. You know I try to keep these things short. There are a few people who'd like to be heard, and I hope that you'll consider their remarks. That's what I have to say, that's my pitch. What questions can I answer for the commissioners? Commissioners have questions?
I just have one question, it's really a one-word answer. Are you implying that the protesters that you represent do not have an issue with the proposed use on this site? Yes or no?
Yes, we have an issue.
Okay, what is that issue?
The location.
The location?
Yes, and here's the answer, Commissioner. Well, can I explain? You don't want to hear anymore?
Well, I'm going to follow up on that.
Well, Mr. Chairman, can I just...
Eric, just let me ask my question.
Yeah, go to Nick, and we'll see where it leads. Okay.
He'll be taken care of. I believe you suggested that the application could be corrected, that word, by simply having Mr. Box bring the entire 10 acres into a PUD, and if they didn't know what they wanted to do it, they could just pencil in some.
Something like that.
My question is, and I'm going to try to answer your other question. You don't have a problem with the memory care deal, you'd like to slide it farther east.
Yes, sir, I'd like it over next to the common area.
I understand that. Now, with that said, you're suggesting that Mr. Box come in, the 10 acres, because we both don't know exactly what we're going to do. It's already zoned R1, so just draw in some R1 houses, and then this would be okay. It would be perfected, if you will. And my question, then, would be, fine, if he did that, and we went that route, what prevents the memory care facility from going forward, and then the applicant coming back and saying, "I want to amend that, my R1 in this PUD to C3," and then we would be in the same position we are now? We'd be sitting there carrying an R C3 application in the future.
Well, nothing prevents them from doing that, Commissioner, as you know, but you will not be in the same position, if I might say so. If they do a PUD and they commit to R1 for the rest of the PUD, we have a much stronger argument than we do now.
But it's committed to R1 right now?
But it's different. It's different because...
Well, it won't be a fresh PUD, I appreciate that.
That's the point.
I appreciate that.
Yeah, yeah. See, this can all be done. You could move this facility over next to the common area and put it to the east of the mansion, and it would serve as a fire break, it would serve as a buffer, and we've done some of these. As a matter of fact, David's father and I did one of these up on May Avenue, where we put a PUD in, and it successfully worked as a block against further expansion of commercial north of Wilshire. So, it can be done, but we're in a weaker position with the mansion over there than we are if it's next to the common area, so.
I have a question, maybe not for Eric, but for the staff. Is it permissible to allow this kind of facility and not change the zoning to R4? Can you do this under R1 with a special use?
No, you couldn't do it in R1 as a special use, but you could put an R1 base zoning in the PUD.
In the avenue?
And therefore, I think that your argument would be more solid on behalf of your clients that we have not changed the base zoning of this entire place.
I'd be in a better position, Commissioner, yes, sir. Yes, sir.
But we all realize here that something's going to come back to us.
But even if that were to occur, if it ain't Sprouts, it's going to be something else.
Yeah.
It's going to be another grocery store. There's some folks say Whole Foods is looking for a location. Now, I don't begrudge this neighborhood of Sprouts or of Whole Foods, they're great operations. I just don't want their hindquarters backed up against these houses, that's all, and that's what they've got in mind. And that's what they've got in mind. And if I'm wrong, then let them stand up and say so.
I guess the question I'd have up for you, Eric, if I could, sorry Bob, I didn't mean to interrupt, is, I'm guessing, having sat up here for a while and seen a lot of PUDs, the PUD that we would have come in that was, quote, "unified" with respect to this, would have the memory care or some... That would be a use, probably set out down here to the west side, and then we'd have tract two, which would be a commercial tract. I mean, and quite frankly, I don't know that I could... As a land use, I would oppose that commercial tract for tract two. The place between... Now, whether it's... I mean, I just envision that being the case. You're right, we'd get some views to protections with respect to the land to the south, etc. But it's... This is an area of major residential development. Your clients are all residents out there. All the... It's a hard corner. I mean, other than... I agree, other than the Green Belt track, which is a little unusual, but because of the creek and topography there, I assume that's what it is, then I would expect if we saw a PUD, we'd see one with a commercial tract to the south... Excuse me, to the east of the proposed site. Wouldn't you guess that, too?
Say it again, Commissioner.
I see. Wouldn't you expect that we would... Even if we got a PUD in this particular context, I'm somewhat persuaded by your unified development argument, because I do feel like this does appear to be a slight shell game here. I mean, due respect, can't say that I'd do it any differently if I owned the land. I'm not being critical, but it's fairly transparent for me to see through. But I would expect, even if they did a unified development, that they would come in with a commercial tract back to the east of the proposed site that most likely we would be in favor of.
I would say it depends on how intense commercial uses we're talking.
Well, I do.
You know?
I understand. Not all of them. But I mean, the grocery store would be a use that I'd expect there. Right?
The least?
If I could, please. I really don't think it matters or that it behooves us to sit here and speculate about what the rest of the development would be.
True.
To me, the question is, and it was pretty aptly posed, whether our policy applies in this situation. You could say it conversely. Are we going to allow people who own large tracts of land to circumvent the policy by entering into would-be leases? And I don't have any problem with the fact that David's clients only control so much of the land. They really don't control any amount of the land. The Shafers control the land. Are we going to require the Shafers to come in and tell us what they want to do with the land? I'm saying yes, I think so.
Well, if that is the case... I'm not saying it is or it isn't. If that is the case, that is certainly not consistent with what we've done in the past. You know, we have people come in here all the time, engine contract, rezoned piece of a PUD. Either amend the PUD, pull it out of the PUD, because I'm buying this piece of earth. We have...
Do you want to add the policy?
Well, I thought we had the policy to prevent a single owner from piecemealing it under their own development. You know?
Here's why it's different. Under the approach that you're discussing, you would secretly have a comprehensive plan limit the ability of a property owner to buy and sell portions of the property. Certainly, I don't think anyone on this commission can say that the comprehensive plan would limit an ability of a landowner to sell only a portion.
Mr. Chairman, how did my approach get in the middle of my presentation?
Mr. Groves, the problem with a unified plan, when you have...
David, Eric's got a point. He has the microphone here, one at a time. How about rebuttal? Come back and rebuttal. I've got other people that want to talk. I understand. We'll hear from them. Then, David, you'll be up. The half a dozen of you who have signed up to speak, we would ask respectfully that, as you come up, you would not repeat each other, nor repeat what Mr. Groves has already told us. So we're looking for new information from you. And the first person who signed up is Adrienne Burchette, if I've got that correct?
Yes, Burchette.
Thank you. Give us your name and address for the record, and pull that microphone down so we can hear you. Thank you.
... vertically challenged. My name is Adrienne Burchette. My address is 2101 Tuddington. I... My home, that I purchased in May 2013, is on the east side of the Schaefer property along the south fence line. So although I wasn't notified in this current notice, the sale of this property and the potential buffer will significantly impact me in the future. But I did look over the... In preparation for this meeting, I looked over the staff report documents, and one thing that hasn't been missioned... Mentioned is the proposed, in one of the exhibits online, an emergency generator to be located on the south end of the memory care facility. Although I completely understand the need for an emergency generator at a facility like this, I would expect there weren't... I didn't see any specific details on the emergency generator, but that'll be fueled by diesel and would be a source of air emissions anytime readiness testing is conducted or maintenance, as well, of course, in emergency conditions. And as well, if the emergency generator is manufactured after June 12, 2006, it'll be subject to federal air quality regulations. In addition, I mean, basically, it'll be a source of air emissions in someone's backyard, as well as noise when it is tested. Additionally, the diesel will have... Will be stored in a tank, and we want some assurances that there would be some sort of secondary containment and proposed plan for, in the event of a spill and stormwater runoff, sending that spill into the neighborhood. And that's all I have to say about that.
They'll have to comply with whatever the city regulations are with respect to fuel tanks, containment, etc.
Right. But will that... I guess whatever is required, will that then be available for public review or comment or any...
You can check our city ordinances, which are available online, to determine any of that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Eric?
I'm going to wait to talk to just a little later. I'm Bob Meyer to begin the speed first. It will come in order.
Well, I'm just getting them in the order that I have them, so...
Okay.
Go ahead.
Okay. Robert Meyer, 2205 Alderham, in the Kingswood addition. I'm a resident in that addition. I've been there for 15 years. I have been on the board of the Homeowners Association, who is actually doing the protesting today, for the last 12 or 13 years. I was president for nine. I'm currently not president. I'm a little befuddled, because we've skipped over the whole issue... One of the big issues is commercial, the only use for this property. That 10 acres was peeled out of Kingswood in the 80s by Dan Schaefer, when he bought it to build his big house. And he bought it, and he put his house in the middle, so he could put his kid's house beside him. It's got gates out on 104th Street for these big houses that he wanted to build. It came from Greenbrier. Greenbrier developed a lot of property out there. They provided for commercial development in other corners. They didn't provide for any commercial development on 104th and Penn in that corner. The common area is the corner. That's where our big sign is. If you've ever been in South Oklahoma City, you know where we're at. We were the first big addition in South Oklahoma City. The success of that addition led to the success of Rivendell and Cascada and all the rest of them. That thing started the growth in South Oklahoma City, and we are proud of it. Eric was a little wrong. We don't have 300 signatures on that petition. We've only got 230, and we're not done. We haven't got the whole neighborhood yet. We don't have to. There's vacant commercial property within a mile all over the place. This isn't a question of whether Sprouts is going to have a place to go or not, or whether somebody's going to have the ability to buy groceries at Sprouts. This is about mixing uses, and that's R1 up there, that Dan Schaefer had. He had his homes there. His kids were going to build, they didn't. Now, they want to sell it. Okay. It could have been developed residential. It can still be developed residential. If possible, this memory care unit may or may not be objectionable. We have tried to be positive about it. We didn't want to come down here and throw a big fit about everything. But what we expected was that the Schaefer heirs would have enough... Some of them have lived in the addition. One of them lives in there now. One of them's husband sits on the board with us, and he won't even tell us what they're going to do. The realtor, when you call the realtor, the realtor tells you it's all spoken for. They've got deals cut on all this. Maybe they haven't shared it with David. But this notion, and maybe you've done it in the past, and sometimes maybe it's okay to ignore that unified plan requirement in your comprehensive plan, but not here, where you have this 10 acres next to this premier addition, that they've already got it sold to somebody. They're just waiting until they get this approved to hit us with the next one. It's not right. It conflicts with the comprehensive plan, as Commissioner Powers suggested. It's not right. And please don't let them do it that way. We may have to accept something up there that we're just not 100% thrilled about, but we can work through it. We will discuss it with them. Eric's idea of moving it over on the east side may or may not be a good plan. It's all fluid, because we don't know what they want to put in there. But what we know, that Sprouts wants to buy it, and we know that the Shafers have said they're going to sell it to whoever will pay them the most money. That isn't... You don't make zoning decisions by what's going to reap the landowner the most amount of money. You look at uses. That's not... That hard corner is owned by the association. It's always going to be owned by the association. You don't have to stick some commercial in the middle of 104th Street on the south side. All the other additions that have developed out there go out to 104th, on Penn and all the way over to May. And people love it. It's quality of life. It's why the people live there. The people that live there are the ones that generate the sales tax that run this city. The store will be there somewhere, wherever it belongs. Thank you.
Thank you. Eric, you ready now?
Yes. It's hard to follow that. Eric Hermanson, I live at 2109 Tuddington. I... If you were to look at the map, I'm on the south side of the Schaefer property, in the middle of the block on the east side. Can everybody get a picture of that? If I had a pointer, I would point to you, but does everybody get the picture? I'd come at it from just a little bit more of a personal perspective. When I purchased my home in 2004, I purchased a home in a residential area. Everything was R1 around it, and that's what I expected it to be. The original plan was for R1. The other three corners are commercial, have some commercial activity, but this is a residential area. We... I sit on the board also. We have always planned it to be residential, and to change now means, in effect, we're breaking the implied contract that we all thought we had to have residential homes in this area to something else. Just, for example, let's just say that I wanted to sell my home to a 7-Eleven, right in the middle of the block. Would you approve that? Of course not. Why would we approve this? Why are we going to change what is R1 now to something else? In reference to the proposed development on the west, the LaSalle group, while we don't have... As Mr. Groves said, we don't have any great problems with that, but we have not gotten any assurances that they're going to do the things they said they were going to do in Rody. They've not given us any... Anything like that. We don't know what kind of retaining wall, if any, there will be there. In particular, the people on St. Andrews, which is on the west, would like some kind of a buffer between the building itself and their homes. So we don't have enough information from them at this point to determine whether or not their plan is acceptable. Thank you.
I'm Tracy Robbins. My address is 2113 Tuddington. I'm right to the left of where Eric just said he was. You had a little pointer up there. Oh, there it is. Okay, take it to the right. More. Keep going, keep going, keep going. Okay, next house. Okay, that's where... That's where we raised our three kids. We've got a pool in the backyard, a lot of money, time, effort went into that backyard. It's beautiful. It's our oasis. It's our refuge. It's where we go to get away from urbanization. The Shafers were allowed to enjoy their backyard for 30 years. We've enjoyed our backyard for 20. Now we have the threat of all this stuff coming in. And if we would have known from the get-go that this would have gone commercial, we never would have bought. It's R1. It's surrounded all sides by R1. And Commissioner Bright and Commissioner Gales, I believe that you both brought up on the Rose Creek, the original intent, the original purpose. That was the original intent, the original purpose for that property. Excuse me for... Oh. I did a little research. If you drop a pin right in the middle of the mansion, and you circle a mile and a half all the way around the mansion, there are eight memory care assisted living places, and they all have vacancies. So we are under the threat of losing our backyard enjoyment for a ninth facility within a mile and a half. There are eight. Now, some... A couple I was surprised, because I thought that they were independent care, so I went to the website. The website lists them as now offering memory care and assisted living. So I think that's an awful lot in a one-and-a-half-mile area of the mansion. I don't think we need a ninth. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I have a list of them all with the addresses, if you want verification, on those assisted living, memory care places.
We believe you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Hi. Good afternoon, council members. My name is Tanya Rig. I live at 10601 Turnberry Lane, which is in the west of the area of concern. My... Our biggest concerns... Let me rephrase. I am the vice president of our association, so I represent the 23 homes on that side. Our biggest concerns are traffic. Right now, when I come home from work, there's been many times when the light's red at Penn that the traffic extends past my entrance. There's only one way in and one way out. So, you know, you're ready to get home, you still have to sit and wait because of the traffic. If they put in another facility of any kind, it's just going to add more traffic. Across the street, there's a Sherwin-Williams, there's a vacant lot that's been sold. We have no idea what's going in there. There's a bad taco place on the other side of that, and then the car wash in a bank. But anyway, I don't want to caveat on everything. However, the ecosystem that is in that whole area, nobody's said anything about that. There's a ton of wildlife that live on that acreage. It's going to be destroyed. Nobody cares, because to me, it's all about money. The guy... The gentleman over here talked about all the commercial sites that are around 104th and Penn that are already commercial zoned. Why don't they go build over there? My thought is, it's probably funding to the, you know, highest bidder, whatever. That's where it's going to get sold. But for St. Andrews Square, if it does go through, we do want a brick wall built around the facility. The Edmund facility does have a brick wall three ways around their facility. It's not in their plans for this one, and we would like for that to be considered. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Julie Haller, 10708 Woodridden. And my name is Julie. I... My parents bought the home in Kingswood. My parents bought the home in Kingswood that I now live in, Sam and Carolyn Cornelius, when I was his age, six years old. And so this has been my home neighborhood for, well, I'm old now, my birthday's next week, for 31 years. And I just, we moved here when my parents both died for this neighborhood, for this home from Belle, Colorado, which is a wonderful place. We love nature. What we do love about this neighborhood is the Nature Trail. There's a great bike path, green belt in the back. The same owls that my dad used to talk to and call down, my son now gets to look at and talk to. And we'd look for foxes and deer prints. And a key part of the uniqueness about our neighborhood is the nature. And what drives that is the creek. The creek, when I was growing up, had trees and soil that was keeping it small. We now have large, sharp, dangerous chunks of concrete trying to keep the water that every spring, when there's any kind of rain, just takes the creek through the whole neighborhood, and it's flooding and eroding and washing away the beautiful part of our neighborhood, which is the Nature Trail. So I'm here just to say, I would love for you all to keep this residential so that my son and my daughter, who's four, can have the same ideal, beautiful neighborhood that I had my whole life. Also, we so appreciate how safe our neighborhood is. Our kids can still play outside and ride bikes in the street. Our kids can still go be active. We don't want them to be inside playing video games, right? We're from Belle, Colorado. We want to hike and ski, really. But this is a wonderful place to live. We love that safety. Any change that could happen with its commercial, I don't understand all this PUD, SPUD, all this stuff at all, but any change would probably bring more concrete, more buildings, more parking, oops, parking lots instead of trees and grass that need to absorb the water so that we don't wash away the beautiful part of our neighborhood. It could also bring people, whether they're employees, being paid low wages at a memory facility, or whether they're people that just are curious because they're at the grocery store. Any of that could change the dynamic of who's walking around our streets when our children are playing outside. By the way, we've been here three years. Y'all are doing an awesome job. Oklahoma City is a fabulous place to live. Thank you so much for your work and for your time.
Thank you. That concludes everyone I'm aware of who signed up to speak. Did I miss anybody? David, your turn.
Before I do, I'd like to ask if staff would at least make a comment on the portion of the comp plan that's been discussed about unified planning.
Sarah Welch, Planning Department. You know, we've used this policy a few times, and it's never garnered this much attention before about, ideally, we do want to see a master plan for all land that's controlled by a project's developer. In a perfect world, we would know what was going to happen on this site, and if and when this comes up, it'll be a discussion for a different day. But planning would prefer that that collector's street connect to 104th as intended. And I know that that would be, I'll look this way and know that everybody will probably disagree with that, so that's not a conversation to have right now. In this particular case, the applicant is not the developer, so that's just something to consider. As we look forward to if commercial development would be appropriate, some of the things that the Planning Department would consider later on is that southwest 104th Street is an arterial street. It's in the urban growth area. There's commercial development at the intersections. So although that's not the application at hand today, those are things that we would consider later on. And one of the reasons PUDs are preferred by the Planning Commission, because those are the things that PUDs can do, is help protect those residential areas. In this particular case, if we look at just the application at hand, the memory care facility wasn't an issue for us. So, is that, other questions? Okay.
And here's the issue. Here's the real issue why the application of calling this not a unified plan doesn't apply. The application that Mr. Grove would seek would have my client, the developer that's ready to go get a building permit next week, and a potential hypothetical mythical developer within the same PUD. Well, that doesn't work. They have different end goals. They have different agendas. That doesn't work. The reason they unified is if the Schaefers might have someone in mind that they want to sell to, but they come forward before this body with a PUD. Well, then they are the ones able to make decisions on the entire PUD. That's not what would happen here. You would have two developers with two different goals trying to come together. One might say, yeah, that's good, we can get our approval, let's go. The other would say no. So what would you do? You'd have to split it into two separate applications. So the approach that the neighbors would ask for would be to stall. A development that is compatible to the neighborhood, one that would seek to help any drainage problems that might be there. And on the ecosystem, I would submit the amount of landscaping and manicured landscaping that will be there, but will help that. There's been talk of commercial and grocery. That's not what is before this commission. What's before the commission is a memory care, which is a residential use. My client is fine dropping the base to an R1. As long as they can build what they have shown this commission they want, they're fine with dropping the base to an R1. It's a residential district. There's nothing commercial about this application. So be happy to answer any questions.
So you're willing to amend the application, base zoning, R1 in this application, if we were to go forward with it?
Yeah, we can drop it to an R1 base, but still maintain the 90% break and the use, specific use we want to do, and everything about the site plan.
Everything the same, except underlying R1 zoning and adding a one R4 use, the one that you've restricted to.
It's allowed.
PUD.
Yeah, just be base of R1 with the only use allowed being what we've already drafted within the SPUD.
Okay.
The analogy of this application, I just was thinking about it, and we've had this many times over the years. On a major street, whatever this is, 104th Street, that you have a street that has only houses, and in the middle of the block, somebody's putting a business. And they come in with an application to rezonate C3 or whatever it is. And what it does, it screws up the whole residential aspect of that neighborhood, and we've denied this. Well, we've asked them to come in with PUDs. If this is agreeable, you've got R1, and just by virtue of fortune or whatever, you have R1 on 10 acres with a great big house on it, it's still residential. And with this amendment, I don't think the neighborhood, I think that it helps the neighborhood with what's to be done in the future, although I somewhat disagree, not disagree, but the comprehensive plan and how this works, I know that you have a contract for deed. If you can get the rezoning, you're going to do it. Well, right now, you can sign the contract because you're agreeing to R1, no problem. You don't have to go through this exercise at all, except for the special use that you want to do. But for the future, it's still residential. It's still, you've still got it covered. And I think that while there's tweaks about the location of what this facility is, and there's issues about drainage and walls and that sort of thing, you know, deal with those. But do you come back with a PUD to deal with those? I mean, I think you do. Is that right? I mean, well, how do you satisfy the neighbors and their concerns about that facility that you're proposing, where it is on the west end? Have you satisfied what the neighbors want you to do about drainage, walls, or anything else?
We have an, what's before the commission is an SPUD.
Is what?
Is an SPUD.
Oh, yes. And there's one amendment on paragraph A, you're going to use monument signs. There's no indication how tall your monument sign is. I'm assuming that that's going to be eight foot.
Well, unfortunately.
What'd you say?
Unfortunately, I tried to convince him to do eight foot, but he only wanted six foot.
Oh, I can't agree with that. Well, no, but it wasn't said, it wasn't stated that it was what the size was. So you've got a PUD, it's all there, and you have the base zoning R1, and you have residential all the way through. End of story. I mean, you know, now you tweak it to where it's satisfying. I think the landscaping, the brickwork, and everything else is really nice. And then another little footnote, is that for years, you've enjoyed the wildlife on 10 acres and whoopee. All that could be developed into houses that ruin your view, ruin this, you know. It's all R1, and it can be developed into residential houses if that's what they want to do with, you can't say a thing about it, you know. So, to me, if you agree to R1 and a six-foot monument sign, I approve, I move to approve the application with those revisions.
The other two issues that I heard raised were the placement of the, well, the emergency generator. I have a little bit of experience with emergency generators, and they're frequently fired up at the crack of dawn. And I would like to see it pushed up toward 104th and up into the northeast corner of the property, if possible. Get it as far away from the residences, existing residences, as possible.
The reason we chose here was because it's going to be completely concealed behind landscaping rather than being visible from 104th.
I'm not as concerned about what it looks like as I am from the how the noise makes.
Can I ask a question about the generator?
Please.
What type of generator is it? Are you using a gasoline or diesel, or are you using natural gas?
I believe it's diesel. Yes, sir.
Well, you might want to consider natural gas, and that takes care of all her concerns as well as fuel issues and spill issues and everything else.
We can certainly look at that. I mean.
I can either.
Yeah, we'll look at addressing, but I mean, for the record, if they developed all the houses, you could go put generators outside of everybody's home.
But that's not what you're doing, David.
Right.
We're talking about a generator for a business facility. There's one at the bank, Western. After we negotiated at length, they're reading this giant green open space to protect the neighbors, they put a generator in the middle of it that they fire up at, you know, 6:00 in the morning on Saturday morning. It's very loud, it's very intrusive. So I would like to see it moved as far away as possible from the neighbors. And then the other question that they asked was about a brick wall, indicating that there was one around the facility in Edmund.
That's a retaining wall. It's not a brick wall. It's a retaining wall because of elevation issues. What my client would prefer, rather than walling off, all the houses here have fences. And so what they would prefer is to landscape with tall, very nice trees rather than walling off the facility. So they believe, my client, that this is preferable than a big wall.
It's putting a fence behind a fence, with probably space in between that no one can make.
If the base zoning is R1, it's residential to residential. Is that not?
Well.
But if the SPUD, we're. My client tells me they have 20, the reason we can't put the generator on the northeast side is there are right-of-way issues and parking issues. The distance from where that generator is to the closest house is 150, 200 feet. So we will do everything in our power to conceal it, push it as close to the building as we can, landscape all around it to conceal it to where I don't think you'd be ever able to see it unless you were in the parking lot. But we agree to push it as far as we can, within the limits of, you know, what we have with right-of-ways and parking requirements and everything else.
Commissioners, any other questions or discussion, questions of Mr. Box, Mr. Grove?
Just a couple of comments. I agree with Commissioner Bright. We use the R1 line zoning. I don't see how this is a problem. I am a little troubled by a couple of things. Nothing to do with the application necessarily, Mr. Box. You know, this, I believe, is inappropriate. We have them all over town. We have them embedded in the middle of the residential areas, not just on the edges. So I don't have a problem with the use. I do have a little bit of a problem, feeling like perhaps I'm being used as a pawn in this deal. And I know that happens with applicants in the commission all the time. It just doesn't rise to this level. I can see the desire of the landowner wanting to own the area to the west or to the east. That is not before us today. That's a separate issue. However, I would say, at least for me, it's probably, if and when it comes, going to be a fairly hard sell. And now we've also raised the issue of unified planning, PUD. And I would ask Dan and staff to get together and get us interpretation guidance on that because this is not how we've applied it in the past, what's been discussed today. But the issue's been raised, I think it should be addressed. With that, I would second his motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve item 21. With the revision to an R1 base. I would make a couple of comments to the neighbors. I agree with Commissioner Gales. An intense commercial is going to be a bit of a hard sell to the east for me if it comes back that way, partly because of the way I feel this is being put on us by the Schaefers. But I also would expect to see some kind of commercial on the south side of 104th Street because that's what you're faced with on the north side now. And the likelihood of residential developing there, to me, seems somewhat diminished by virtue of what's on the north side already. Also, since the young lady made the comment about the creek and the erosion, I would remind the Neighborhood Association that maintenance of that creek is actually your responsibility under the development regulations for your neighborhood. So that's something you all need to address if erosion there is an issue. You need to get together and deal with that. And with that, ready to vote, commissioners? Cast your votes. And it is approved as conditioned. Item 22 is SPUD 744, an application by Rollins to rezonate 4301 North May Avenue from SPUD 85 to SPUD 744 in Ward 2. Hi, Dennis.
Chairman, members of the commission, Dennis Box for the applicant, and Terry Haynes is here, right here to my right. Terry's an engineer. Many of you all know him. Those of you that don't, he does work all around the United States for not only Sam's but Walmarts. And this is a site that I think we're all familiar with. Many of us have probably in years past bought a car off this site. This used to be the Lynn Hickey Dodge site. And we met with staff, and Putt 85 determined it was not in accord with what was needed. And so what we've done is come in with a spud. We can agree with the technical evaluations that the staff has asked us to provide, except for on number four, when it deals with landscaping. We actually have a detailed landscaping plan that I gave to Mr. Chambly, and we just asked that number four be changed to say landscaping will be in accordance with the plan. We will exceed the landscaping for our entire site. So we have a landscaping plan that we've given to your staff, so.
Let me back up and understand. Your landscaping plan exceeds what's described in section four here?
Yes, sir.
Is there any reason to take section four out? You're going to exceed it? What, I mean, what am I missing?
Nothing other than, many times when you go up to the building permit department, I want to make sure that there's no question that when we apply for a building permit, that what we have supplied on our landscaping plan and the staff has looked at, they're okay with. They don't always look at the world around like the planners look at the world around. So you're really not missing anything other than, that way, we have no concern or caution.
Okay, I'm satisfied with that. I just was curious as to why it would make a difference.
Dennis, your neighbor to the south, Lowe's.
Yes.
Across 39th. When we approved that application, even though some trees have died, that they really had an extensive landscape plan for that entire parking lot area, et cetera. Is that what you're anticipating to do?
Yeah, they have landscaping all around.
In the middle, I mean, trees in the middle of the parking lot, where the shades and those sort of things.
They will comply with all the. They will comply with all the internal landscaping, but they also have landscaping that surrounds both the park and the R1 houses, which you find to the south, so.
Now, my real question is, why is it that you've carved out an eighth of this thing for SPUD?
The, the rest of the, well, you're going to see one other spud, which is shown there, is PUD 381. We were under the understanding with the staff that that allowed the Sam's Club to be put on there. It was an I-1 underlay, but it had some limitations on uses. So you will see another case come back in about three weeks, but the rest of the property is zoned I-1. So to answer your question, we have a contract to purchase the property. The landowner gave us permission to rezone what was necessary to allow for a Sam's Club, but not to rezone the area that you see on the remainder of the property, which is I-1.
Hey, now, this is segueing to our discussion just before. If you needed to have this rezone for an SPUD, you know, and you know that you can do I-1 on the whole rest of the thing, why is it that you don't come in with a PUD on the entire property? If you want to do this, then do the whole thing.
Yeah, but I wasn't very articulate. The property owner did not authorize us to go rezone the whole property. And if you're a property owner, let's say you own this property, and let's say that you are worried about, you know, when it comes to closing day, I don't show up with the money. Well, you don't want a piece of property that's zoned for a single user when you had a piece of property that you sat on for at least 25 years that had I-1 usage and would allow a number of different uses, so.
This has been vacant for a long, long time, lying fallow, and I would assume that if you have a possibility of a contract from Sam's Club to come in and put a Sam's Club on the middle of this, that property owner is just kicking up its heels like whoopee. It's not like, I'm just concerned, though, that you go through this exercise, and you have I-1 on everything, and you can do whatever I-1 allows, such as signage, such as architectural features, such as whatever there is. Our ordinances with zoning haven't caught up with what it is, I think, is appropriate for these kinds of locations. You could really, really improve that portion of May Avenue immensely, and I don't know what you're going to do other than you're going to do I-1.
Yeah.
Well, that's my, that's my question.
I'm telling you what we're going to do. We're going to do a Sam's Club, but in the spud that you're looking at, we're not going to have any buildings. It'll just be parking.
No, I understand, yeah.
I mean.
You could have asked for it to be zoned I-1, Bob, and just made it match the rest.
That's my question. This, what we're doing here is for a parking lot, correct?
That's correct.
Then why do we have these uses?
We've taken them out.
We've taken all the uses except parking lot out?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
We, we've agreed to the TEs, except for number four, we just asked that our plan be in there, so on plan review, it's saying. But I, I think they might have been kicking up their heels, but they still have concerns and want to make sure they're protected.
They're so happy, Dennis, they can't breathe. You're kidding me.
No one has signed up, commissioners? We have a motion and a second to approve item 22. Cast your votes.
Thank you very much.
Item 23 is SPUD 745, an application by Greg Moleman to rezone 2421 South I-35 Service Road from SPUD 697 to SPUD 745, Ward 7.
Good afternoon. My name's Jeremy Meek. I represent Apollo Building Systems. We're the general contractor. The Molemans are both present here today. We've never done this before, and began helping them clean up the area that they had been using. They had went through a many-year process of buying the homes, had site proof fencing up, with parking vehicles there, and it was blocked by the piece of property that says R1. It's a piece of ODOT property. Someone from the city came along and told them they needed to correct their zoning. They asked myself to help them with that, and we went through the process. I have a letter here from 2003 where John Moleman had been trying since '03 to obtain, it says, a disposal of excess right-of-way, kind of a blocked piece of land, to get a driveway on. And the reason why is because these are the big Culligan water trucks, and they get off the highway there, and they literally stop on the service road and back up their driveway. It's very dangerous. When the rezoning came through, when, and I don't know the proper terminology, when we filed for this spud and Mr. Lance Gross helped me at City Hall, there was no access allowed because the land was not the owner's. I have on that spud was approved March 12th of '13 as spud 697.
Yeah, Mr. Meek, let me just stop you. The only reason you're here today is for a second access drive?
Yes, sir.
The spud's been approved, the uses are approved, everything about it's been approved, except for the driveway.
Yes, sir, but the driveway's there.
Okay. That's all I want to know right now. We've got three people who are signed up, or two people who are signed up to talk about this. Let's see. It all appears, everyone appears to be in support of.
Yes, sir.
Your application. Thanks, Second. That's what I wanted to.
Thank you so much.
Prove you along.
You made that simple.
We have a motion and a second to approve item 23. Cast your votes, and that's approved.
Item 24 has been continued. Item 25, C6556, final plat of Falling Springs, Section 2 in Ward 8.
Good afternoon. Kendall Billen with Crafton Toll, representing the applicant, and this is the second final plat of the Falling Springs edition. It matches the approved preliminary plat. In regards to the TEs, we're okay with all the TEs. However, on TE number four, we would like to ask that it be amended. If you notice on the west side of our phase, there's a drainage way. That TE would require that 147th Street extend all the way across the drainage way with this phase, and it's an internal stub. We own and control the property to the west of it. We fully intend to make that connection. So what we would like to ask, as opposed to putting that stub in right now that would service no lots on the other side, all it would be was a lot of money sitting there on the ground waiting. So what we would propose is that we amend TE number four to read something that, and it's a little bit off the map to the south, but 143rd Street also crosses to the west. So we would like to amend it to read something to the nature that either 147th or 143rd Street with the next final plat would extend to the west, and that also we would limit it and could have no more than 10 lots west of that drain until such time as we connect both of those across to the west.
We have that language.
We worked with staff, and so hopefully that will work.
Staff agrees. And no one has signed up on this item?
Move approval of the application with the modifications read into record.
Okay. Motion to approve item 25, amending TE number four. Cast your votes, and you're approved. Thank you.
Item 26 has been continued. Item 27 is SPUD 741, application by the Girl Scouts of Western Oklahoma to rezone 6100 North Robinson from multiple districts to SPUD 741 in Ward 2.
My name is Mike Alfield. I'm the director of facilities for Girl Scouts Western Oklahoma, and we, our offices are at 6100 North Robinson. We purchased the property that we're on there at 6100 North Robinson a couple of years ago and remodeled an existing building, refurbished it into a much nicer facility for our programming and office space. And after we were there for a while, we realized we've got some adjacent property, vacant property, some of it is, it's just various zonings, and we'd like to expand our facility there. So I got with the planning commission, and we looked at what we could possibly do there, and it was recommended that we do a SPUD in order to put some sort of facility there, actually maybe add some parking there, outdoor activities, and maybe an activity building that we could construct there that would meet, meet the, of course, meet the zoning and, but we don't really have a plan for that yet. But we have not purchased the property. We're under negotiations to purchase the property and wanted to make sure that we could get it rezoned in a way that we could utilize it before we do purchase it, so.
Would you anticipate that these sites would all be used by the Girl Scouts?
Now, that, that is one issue that we want to make sure we don't interfere with. The billboard right now does have advertising that, by the Girl Scouts on it. It's not our billboard. It would be on our property, and it is under a separate SPUD right now that allowed for that billboard, but we don't want to lose that billboard. We don't own it.
But it is on your land.
It would be, it is not in that.
Well, when you buy it.
Yes.
You're buying the billboard, or the land, not the billboard.
Right.
So you are, you are, the land you're buying is subject to the billboard lease.
That is correct.
And what is the term of the billboard lease? Do you know?
I should know that, but I can't tell you exactly. I've talked to the, to the, to the guy that's in charge of that for the, I can't remember the name of the company, but I think it's got a 10-year lease on it, something like that.
Maybe I should ask how much is left on the 99-year lease, but.
Yeah.
But if you eliminate personal, and personal storage also is a bit of a concern, that you've asked for these uses. Personal, in addition to non-accessory signs, you've also asked for personal storage as a use.
Can I jump in here for just a minute? Mr. Alfield was good enough to talk to and coordinate with Chuck Wigan, who is very active in the development of a unified plan for this area. They have their own vision about what they want this area to grow up to be, and they're developing a plan, and they're about to circulate it and so on. And he very kindly gave Mr. Alfield some advice about what he thought he ought to include in this PUD, based on what their vision for the development of this area.
Go on.
And I think a number of the uses that are included here are included more in keeping with that suggestion than they are necessarily in keeping with the actual intended use of the property by the Girl Scouts. And I think things like personal storage and wholesale storage and distribution and even the multifamily residential and hospitality, and, I mean, all those things, the custom manufacturing, and, and I would even go so far as perhaps the retail sales alone, I'm sure they'll want to have some kind of little gift shop, the repair services, I mean, all those things, I think, really were more, the language that Chuck Wigan used with me was that they were looking at this sort of as a template for future PUDs in this area, and I'm not, you know, crazy about that idea. I would really like for them to have whatever use they need of the property, and given that that may be a little vague, I'm okay with it being a little flexible. But I also must say that I am very much comforted by the fact that it is the use that it is. They have been where they are now since the 60s. I'm pretty sure they're going to be here for the next 50 years, and so I'm not terribly concerned about there being some flexibility in the PUD, more than I would be for perhaps another user.
Okay, now, to counter that argument, they could leave this property in a year, and you've got personal storage, wholesaling, now accessory signs.
And I would like to see all those things go away. I'm not, don't, don't get me wrong.
Will they stay there?
No, I would, I would like for all of those things to be eliminated from this application.
If I may, I have personal preference. I think, other than personal storage, because it's so close to the Broadway extension, although as I think about it, it's probably not a bad place for personal storage, kinda, but what's wrong with hospitality there? It's on a highway.
It's been hospitality at that location.
Yeah. I mean, that, that use makes sense in this particular area for, for, for anybody, right? I mean, it frankly benefits the Girl Scouts in the future.
I'm just trying to get rid of the billboard.
Well, I don't want to get rid of the billboard.
I've already tried that. I would love it if you could get rid of it.
Well, let's go back to the billboard.
Personal storage kind of bothers me, just because it is by the highway.
We don't know the term of the lease, correct?
Uh.
It's a long, suffice it to say it's a long term.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's, it's a fairly new billboard. In fact, it was moved recently, I believe.
Well, I understand. I don't know the term of the lease.
Okay.
But you would or could agree to not renewing that lease when it runs its term.
Don't do that.
I believe we'd be all right with that.
I suspect you wouldn't be too, because I, I don't think any of us will be here then.
So I, that's, that's my point, I think.
I'm not sure how I feel about that, frankly. I would love it if the billboard would go away, but I would like to see personal storage, custom manufacturing, wholesaling, storage and distribution, and multifamily residential removed from the application, if you're okay with that.
Yes, yes.
And is there anybody else here who wants to speak?
No one signed up.
I'm going to move approval.
Subject two.
The removal of those items from the application.
And the non-renewal of the non-accessory signs expiration?
Look, due respect, I don't think we ought to ask Mr. Alfield to agree to that.
Yes, I, I do have, I'm, I'm a little concerned about what legal rights we have to do that. I really don't know. I really don't know. I'd have to look into that a little bit further.
I mentioned it because he agreed to it. That's why.
I, I think leaving that aside.
That's fine, I mean, I don't care.
With the, with the removal of those items.
As a matter of fact, if, I mean, I think if, in fact, Mr. Gross and I talked about this before, if, if we're going to mess with the billboard issue, we probably should pull that SPUD that's there out of the, out of the application and just leave it alone. It's whatever.
I, I think that might be a good idea, just not deal with that piece of property. It's, it's a little tiny piece of property.
Well, it's an income generator for them if they buy it, though. I mean, we're taking away a revenue res.
Oh, no, I'm not, I'm not saying that. We're just not going to include it in this, in this application.
Oh, okay.
Remove it from the application.
Yeah, all right.
And I, I think that would be a fine, fine idea.
That way, you'll have two SPUDs.
I just want to agree to lose that.
Okay, so have we, did you follow all that, if we, if we make a motion out of that that's coherent?
But in addition to the deletions, we should also delete non-accessory signs if you're taking that SPUD out.
Yes, that's a good idea.
I don't want you to put another billboard.
No.
If you can, right next to it or something like that.
Not even considering.
So we take that out, too.
Okay, could I?
Okay.
All right, now we have a motion?
Now we have a motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and second to approve item 27 as conditioned. Cast your votes. It's approved. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item 28 is PUD 1511, application by Shaz Investment Group to rezone 13601 Southwestern from AA to PUD 1511 in Ward 5.
David Box, 522 Call Core Drive, here on behalf of the applicant. Also with me is Chris Anderson. This is the commercial portion of this piece of property that has been before the commission multiple times now. The last time it was heard would have been sometime in November, and it was the desire of the commission that we postpone it, go back, come up with a site plan showing you what our conceptual intentions are, strip out some more uses, and come back. We had several meetings with several of you, and I thank you for that, I think, right around Thanksgiving. So here we are now, and what you have before you... And what you have before you is, Cindy, do you have the, in your packet, you have a, our conceptual, you know, site plan showing you how we, there it is, how we want and anticipate this parcel to develop. And what we've tried to do is force the parking off of Western, force it between what would be some out parcels and the larger building. And in addition, we have removed multiple uses, and on top of that, we put in some requirements that a certain number of uses cannot be within the west 150 feet of this P U D, so as to not be adjacent to the residential. So those uses, like they, some of the eat establishments and a gas station, would have to be all the way on Western rather than on the Western side of this. There's a handful of issues I wanted to address within the staff report. I think because of the holidays, there was a mix-up on some of our language within our P U D. Through our meetings with various commissioners, we agreed and took out some uses and kept some uses. There was some confusion. Within your staff report, laundry services should be in there, and it shows it marked through, and eating establishments, alcohol permitted, should be in there, and it doesn't show it on there. Then as we move forward, the language on page three of your staff report is, is wrong. It says the same thing. This use is limited to retail gasoline sales within the P U D, not a separate use unit. That, that language is repeated twice. That is an error. The document actually has that language, and then the second asterisk is, these uses not permitted within the west 150 feet, which is also addressed within a T E that we're fine with. On screening, there was some concern that rather than just say where it's adjacent to residential use, we actually specified that it will be on the south and west, so that our document actually says south and west rather than just residential use, so it's more specific. In addition, number 9.8 is incorrect. What we've asked for is three, because of our frontage, we have approximately 1,400 square feet, or 1,400 feet of frontage along Western. The amount of separate businesses that you could have, we think dictates a taller than an eight-foot sign, you can see just in this site plan. What we would like is two signs within the northern tract, one in the southern tract, all monument at 15 feet. We think the 15 feet is still reasonable, but with the amount of potential businesses that you could have there, I think it would be necessary to have something with a little more height. I think it's worth noting that the property owner north of us has C3 P U D with, with no limitations on, on that. So we would be more curtailed than that, but because of the amount of potential end users, we think we need something taller, and this is a major activity corridor, it's been widened and it's a major intersection. As we go on to the technical evaluations, if I can get there, we are fine with T E number one, two, three, four. On T E number five, what we'd ask for is a brick column on the, when we do it on the west, to be at every lot line, to have some uniformity, which is similar to what we've done on the southern end. So we do agree to the brick columns. We would just ask, rather than the 24 feet, they'll be at the corner of every lot. Number six, we are fine with. Number seven, we are fine with. Number eight is the signage that I addressed. What we'd ask for is 215 and 115 on the southern. Number nine, we agree with, with what the traffic study says, with the same caveat I gave him last time. In the conclusions section, it asks that certain improvements be done by the city, so I don't want our agreement with this T E to be a reflection that we, we think we're in any way saying, yes, the city has to do this. But we know that when we go to develop this commercial part, we have to do the traffic signal and the left turn lane at 138th, and that's our responsibility. And at number 10, that deals with the restriction of 150 feet on the west side of this, and we agree with that. I try to talk fast and keep it quick. Be happy to answer any questions.
When we, when we talked about this a week ago or two weeks, when, whenever it was, I had expected a more detailed analysis of what it is you're going to do. But I have to say that the sketch, the only relevant sketch that I see in this packet is that you have the parking behind the buildings, and I like that. I think that's a nice way to develop, and it's probably consistent with what we've been told by experts is the way to do this. I think it's good. I don't agree at all to 15-foot signs. I, I think that, I mean, because there's nothing else out there. You're dealing with raw land and nobody, there's no sign competition going on anywhere. And, and I would agree, though, for two in the north, one in the south, that an eight-foot monument sign, I think you can adequately cover whatever you're doing with this development because you're showing three buildings, I think it is, in the north part, and I don't know what it is in the south part. And, and, and I don't know what tenants you're going to have, I don't know what it looks like, but you're going to come in with a, with a specific plan every time there's something developed, right?
Yes.
I mean, all of this is done. So, I mean, this is a vast improvement of what you did before, which was essentially give us two square boxes and come in there with a rezoning period, you know, without any kind of specifics. At least today, we have some specifics about what it is, what uses you're going to have. You deleted the large gasoline stations, you, I mean, those kind of things. And there's, it's a commercial development, so I don't deny you that there's going to be businesses in there, you don't know what they are, or what the final shape of the building is, but with a specific plan coming in with landscaping, et cetera, et cetera, you know, I think that this is a vast improvement, but only, you know, eight-foot monument signs, two of them in one, I think you'll be fine.
Well, let me, let me, and let me explain why we wanted more than, than eight.
Well, I know why.
Just on the, the north track, you have four separate users on the frontage, and you could have eight to 10 users because of how, how long this is within this building.
Well, but you're, but you're going to have, whatever you're going to name this, it's going to have a name, right? Something Mall or something, whatever it is. And if you have, if you have a dozen little shops in there, you can't get them on, you can't get them on all the, you can't get there. I mean, it's physically, unless you have a 25-foot, you know, I mean, you, you have, you have business identities that go on, and people will know what's going on here, and you'll have signs on the buildings, you know, I mean, you've got signage going on, and you'll have this. So I don't want, I don't, I think it's, I think it's not appropriate in an area that has no other sign competition at all to have large signs, and it doesn't make any sense. I think that the issue is, let's bring it down and have tasteful development, and I, again, applaud the, the internal circulation of what it is you're proposing. I think that's going to be a nice one, you know? So that's my comment.
Just to further, part of the, the drawback to forcing the buildings to the front is that the, you know, the attached signage on the second building, really, you don't, you won't be able to see it, and that's why we feel like, the 15-foot, and it came through a lot of discussion with, with various other people, so we would, we would hope that, you know, still committing to a monument and still having landscaping that.
Here's, here's the, here's an example. Highland Park in Dallas, in the middle of everything. You go into that place and there's signs on the stores, there's no 15-foot, there's no pole signs, there's no nothing. You go into Highland Park and you find out where the stores are. That's, it's, the, the argument doesn't fly. You can go into this place that you're developing, assuming it's going to be really, really nicely done, and you go into the internal part and you say, well, this, you know, here's my stores. You're not going to drive by 50 miles an hour and spot a little sign this big on a 15-foot monument sign, when you have 30 stores in there.
Well, I, I agree, and I, I end up getting drugged to that. That same development you're, you're talking about in Dallas every time, but I don't foresee Emilio Pucci and Tori Birch going into this development. Those are more destinations, so sure, you won't need a sign.
We'd like to see it, but I don't know what you're proposing. I, you know.
I'm sort of leaning David's way, Bob. You're not going to like that, but, I mean, what you're describing is a large lifestyle center in Dallas as opposed to a small shopping area.
Only one example. There are others.
I understand, well, I know. But three signs for all of this frontage.
He liked the 15-foot sign, tied, sorry.
I understand, but I'm not as bothered by that, a 12- or 15-foot sign. Make it 12 feet, I don't care, but, yeah, I know he's asking for 15. I think that, I was okay with that.
And we do have sign competition, and because immediately north of us is zoned, C3 with tall signage, so there is competition. It's not on the ground now, but it's permissible. I doubt they're going to rezone it with straight C3 to lower their sign. So we've put a lot of work into this, and we would ask for your approval, and we hope that Emilio Pucci does put a store in this development.
Todd, any comments? It's Ward 5.
Not necessarily. I mean, I, I visited with David about this, and I, I mean, I'm glad and satisfied with the, the changes that they've made. And having said that, even my partner to the, my left here will not agree with it, I think that the, a 15-foot sign is appropriate here. I think you're going to see that once that this center is approved and goes in, that these residences that are commercial, that are across the street, are probably going to change, that those businesses will, they may not cease to exist, but those buildings will probably come down and we're going to see some more of this, which could be a nice little corridor here. Everything south of it, it's where the tornado went through, is all going to be brand-new. It's going to be a very nice area. I don't think this detracts from it. I would move approval, and I may have to, you may have to walk me through this because there were several things with the revision on T E 5, that there would be stone or masonry columns on every lot, residential lot corner. That way it doesn't, it, it just assists them in that. And then on T E 8, that it would say.
I think if we delete T E 8, what we wrote in the, the P U D is the 15.
I would say that's, yeah. Deleting T E 8.
Wait a minute. Motion is second. Yeah, you did, it was out of order. Come, come up. Your sheik got put under one for the next case, I'm sorry. Give us your name, please.
Chairman, well, I would never say out of order, so I will say that. Alan Gann, 5400 North Grand Boulevard. Actually, my company, Ella Smead Earthland LFC owns this land. Applicant may say they own the land, but actually, my company owns it. So as a landowner, I'm here to ask you to deny this.
You own this land?
Ella Smead Earthland LFC. We're the owner of the record.
And you also own the hard C3 corner, don't you?
We own the entire hundred acres.
Mm-hmm.
And we have asked our attorneys to file a quiet title suit. So I'm asking you to deny or delay this till the quiet action to, suit is resolved.
I can assure you, my client owns this. This gentleman has fought us all along the way and has tried to delay us for over a year now, and this is just the latest attempt to delay this. My, my, I'd be happy to provide staff, actually, we had to provide staff the deed to even file this application. So he's hoping that a, some potential district court might have a case filed. This is the first I've heard about this, but my client owns the property, he's got a deed that we filed with our application, and what he's telling his commission is not accurate.
I'm here to tell you, we have a deed, too, of the record.
Really not up to the commission to determine title to property. If the applicant has sufficient documentation that they own or have, the owner's permission is on the property, that's about as far as we can go. The commission didn't have the, have the bailiff law or the jurisdiction really to try title.
And that's why I'm asking to delay it till that thing is resolved, because I'm the owner. They're not representing the owner. The applicant is not representing the owner, he's not representing me.
Yeah, I think, yeah. You're, you're going to have, you're going to have to resolve that in court, that's not for us to decide.
And that's why we have asked to file the quiet title, so.
Well, that's, again, that's for the courts and not for us.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, but we don't have any jurisdiction over that, we cannot help.
Daniel, if, if it is ultimately determined that this gentleman does in fact own the property, will that in any way affect the zoning of the property? I mean, are we granting title, granting zoning based on representations of ownership by someone else? If it turns out that he does own the property, will it nullify the zoning?
Very well could, yes.
Okay.
And if I could make a comment, Mr. Gann has protested us for over a year, and I find it strange that this is the very first instance that, that this claim comes up.
We're not going to deal with that, David, so you don't need to be concerned.
The, Mr. Chairman, the other thing to consider here is, this application has been before us many times, and it's true that while we've only heard this objection today, this is a, a P U D that we've been kicking around for a long time, it still has to go to the council. I think we, we act on it today like Mr. Hensley suggested, we vote, and what happens down the road, happens down the road.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Ready to vote? Cast your votes.
All right.
And it's approved.
Thanks. I am, I'm, I've got to go, I've got to go to an event. I know there's a couple of items still to go on here. This is my last Planning Commission meeting, so I wanted to say thank you to everyone. I think I'm the shortest-serving out of all of you guys, so I appreciate the service that you provide to the city. I know this takes a lot of time and effort, and I'm very grateful for that, and it's been a pleasure serving with the city, so I wish you well, and I trust that you will continue to support the, the work of the Planning Department Development Services staff and Aubrey, who will be replacing me in the, in the interim role, and so, thanks very much.
Well.
Well, Russell, I've enjoyed working with you, sitting side by side here for, what, 11 years now, 13, whatever the number is. I admire your ability, background, interest, intellect, and your advocacy particularly for good planning issues or good planning principles, and you will be missed, and we wish you well.
Thank you. There is a going-away fair, last farewell next Thursday, that you're, I think you're all invited to, at the art museum over there, so, at 4 o'clock. So I hope to see you all there.
Okay. Good luck and Godspeed.
Out of 29, C 6545, final plat of Hanger Clinic, located north of Memorial Road and east of Buridian Avenue.
Good afternoon, good evening, Tim Johnson, Johnson and Associates. This plat was continued a couple of different times. We had some issues with regard to the old sign that was on the corner there of what is now going to be Lot 2. So we've come back and reordered the plat according to what the staff and Mr. Gales had asked us to do, and so we would ask for your approval. There is a variance required, variance on item number 3, and none of the properties along the, this particular area of the, of the frontage road have the side triangles taken out until you get to Quellbrook Boulevard where the street was built, but in this particular case, the right-of-way is set extremely far to the north, and so there's not really a need for a right-of-way clip.
No one has signed up, commissioners, we have variance to T 3.
Move variance.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the variance. Cast your votes. It's approved.
And Tim, you agree with all T E's?
Yes, sir.
Prove the application.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve item 29. Cast your votes. And that's approved.
Thank you.
And item 30, C 6563, final plat of Morgan Crossing, located north of Britton Road and west of Morgan Road.
Again, Tim Johnson, on behalf of. Again, Tim Johnson on behalf of the applicant. This one was, in your staff report, was recommended to be continued. Obviously, we asked to be heard, and now that we're being heard, I have a couple of comments regarding the TEs. First of all, the reason we were asked to be continued had to do with the side distance issue on Morgan Crossing Drive, and the traffic staff had approved that at the preliminary plat stage. We've looked at it. I brought an exhibit. It is clearly, a clear sight to both of our property lines, well within the setback requirements, in excess of 600 feet either direction for the speed limit posted on that road. So it's obvious, very obvious, that it's a clear deal. I think it may have been an oversight. Regarding the other TEs, we really agree with all the TEs with the need to clarify. On TE number four, when the latter was drafted to the staff regarding amenities to be put in the common area at the preliminary plat stage, it wasn't known which section the developer was going to come in with in his first phase. Common Area A is located on the east portion, which would be Section 2. And in this particular Section 1 plat, there are no common areas shown. So I've talked to the developer and I've talked to the staff, and we're willing to add a technical evaluation that allows us to use Lot 1, Block 4 as an interim common area, which would allow us to put some park benches. The entire subdivision would be connected with the sidewalks required, and any other amenities that are put in as part of the development would then be relocated to the Common Area A when Section 2 comes online. We'd be happy to add that as a TE.
Lot 1, Block 4 is right at the entrance, Tim?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Oh, right there, at Morgan Crossing Road?
That's correct, right there. Yeah, right at the entrance.
Yeah, I think that makes sense.
And other than that, we're in agreement with all the other TEs.
No one signed up, commissioners? Any discussions, questions, motion?
I'll move to approve the application, and we're going to add the TE that we will use Lot 1, Block 4 as a common area pending development of Section 2. Is that right, Tim?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve item 30 as condition. Cast your votes, and it's approved.
Thank you.
That concludes the items for public hearing. Planning Commission committees, Planning Commission members. Planning Department just left.
Can I say, I really do think we need to do something to kind of get a grip on this alcohol zoning issue. I don't, I know exactly what, but, you know, we need to coordinate with the Able Commission and do something with our legislative liaison, I mean, whatever it's going to take, we've just got to have something that makes a little more sense.
A drink to that. Sorry. It was really bad. I couldn't pass it up. Development Services, municipal councillor. Citizens to be heard, other business, motion adjourned? We're adjourned. Dan, can you?